Good evening and welcome. It's Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021, a regular meeting in the Pacific Grove City Council. It's 6:00 PM. I'll ask the city clerk to please give us a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith? Council members Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams? Paduri?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
Absent from the meeting at this time are Mayor Protem Smith and Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you. I'll turn the meeting back to you, Ms. Candell, for our first order of the evening, AB 381.
Thank you. And before I do that, I do see Councilmember McAdams as present, so I have just marked her here. Thank you. Honorable Mayor, good evening, members of the city council, staff, and members of the public. At its October 6th, 2021, meeting, council approved Resolution 21-029, proclaiming a local emergency, ratifying the state of emergency proclaimed on March 4th, 2020, and authorizing remote teleconference meetings of all city legislative bodies for the following 30 days in accord with the Ralph M. Brown Act. Resolution 21-029 has effect for only 30 days. The council must now renew the effect of the resolution by either ratifying it or adopting another. If no action is taken, the resolution shall lapse. The staff recommendation tonight is for council to ratify Resolution Number 21-029, Emergency Teleconferencing Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of all city legislative bodies for the following 30 days in accord with the Ralph M. Brown Act. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we need to go off for public comment on this item?
I believe so, Your Honor. I know that we did initially.
Mr. Mayor, yes, you do.
All right.
I don't see any public hands raised.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and I move to ratify Resolution Number 21-029. May we have a vote, please?
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith? Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 601. Mayor Protem Smith absent.
I hear a motion to approve the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Emilio, would you please be the honors?
Thank you for your patience here.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Now may I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Second.
And a vote.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith? Councilmembers McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 601. Mayor Protem Smith absent.
Our next item on the agenda is 2A, GIS Master Plan Presentation by Mohamed Kasimi, our Chief Information Officer. Welcome.
Like Mohamed may be on mute.
Hello, good evening. I'm sorry, I had some technical difficulties. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public. As part of the city's IT master plan, our staff worked with the consulting firm named Geographic Technologies Group, also referred to as GTG in short, to complete the Geographical Information Systems Needs Assessment and Implementation Plan, or GIS Master Plan, in fiscal year 2021. The assessment involved meeting with all the departments, all our departments, and taking a comprehensive look at how GIS could be used to benefit the city and what the city would need to implement an effective GIS program. A copy of that report is included in your agenda packet. This evening, we have Curtis Hinton and James Kelt to briefly provide information on the GIS master plan. With that, I would like to turn it over to Curtis and James from GTG for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohamed, and good evening, City Council, Mayor, and Pacific Grove staff. We really are thankful for the time this evening to meet with you all and give our findings on the GIS Needs Assessment and Implementation Plan. My name is James Kelt. I'm the Vice President of Software here at GTG. I've been with the company a little over 18 years. And with me tonight is Curtis Hinton, one of our founders of the company. He has actually been a GIS manager for local government, so he brings a wealth of knowledge to the project in today's presentation. We're really proud of our California clients, and we're honored to work with Pacific Grove in this initiative and look forward to the next 15 minutes meeting with you and your team.
So we have a lot of ground to cover. The first thing, you may not be really sure what a GIS is, and it's a geographic information system. So what it really does is it combines maps, like, you know, traditional paper maps that we make digital, and data together so we can have more information. We can visualize our data and use our data in new, in different ways. I like to say a map is worth 1,000 records. So we've got a lot of ground to cover. We're going to show you some live applications. We're going to kind of show you some of the findings of our GIS plan. So staying on the theme of what is GIS? It is a combination of databases, and one of the things that James and I like to say is that about 95% of the data that we have in local government has a geographic context. It ties back to a parcel, back to an address. So it lends itself to be mapped and visualized that way. So we think about, think about all the different systems that you have at Pacific Grove IT Systems, and all of that data, almost all of that data can be mapped out and visualized. And these two graphics are pretty illustrative of what we're talking about. So we see on the left-hand side is that we try to take the data in a GIS and put it into layers and kind of model the real world. On the right-hand side, we think about data in its raw form, and often it can be confusing. It's a lot of information. And we start to sort through that data, arrange that data, and then present that data visually so we can tell a story. So James is going to show us something called a story map. It's part of a geographic information system.
And just let me know if that transitioned okay there, Kurt? Did you get that transition?
Still seeing the power point.
So yeah, as Kurt had mentioned, you know, GIS can really take a lot of different forms. Really wanted to start with what we call the story map concept, and I believe I'm sharing now, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, perfect. This is a client down south in Palm Springs that really wanted to leverage this concept of how to promote what the city's doing with the GIS initiatives as it applies to their engagement with the residents. A lot of different ways you can deploy information. You can bring in high-quality imagery in here. You can see some of the items for the historical areas that they have, and it's really just doing that. It's telling a story of what they're trying to do to increase, you know, folks visiting their organization, their agency, and promote what they're trying to do. So here's the convention center. You'll see a map interface over here, and as I scroll through this list, it's really just painting that picture. Here's the Renaissance Hotel and various other locations that they offer throughout the organization. And we'll see a little bit more of this as we toggle through different applications, but that just gives you a quick idea of what a GIS can look like, and we'll take a look at some other concepts in different departments here shortly.
So what we did is we embarked upon a seven-step process of multi-phase GIS strategic plan. And that started off with a kickoff presentation. We interviewed the departments. We went through these steps to create this three-year plan of implementation and really expanding some of the GIS efforts that already taken place. So, and this was, it went over a six-month timeframe. So let's take a look a little bit of that, and we'll take a look at a couple more applications as well. The first thing that we did is we met with the departments. We talked with them about what potential uses of the technology could be, how they potentially can leverage their IT systems and geo-enable that data so they can visualize it and analyze it. So over a couple week period, we met with the departments, and then we created the plan from that after we identified what some of the possibilities were. Now, as part of that, there were common needs shared by every department, and one of those is having those data layers. You know, James showed various data in that first story map, and we can see here in the Recreation Department, they want to be able to map out trees and trash cans and our permits, our work order history, public works, and you can imagine all of our infrastructure, our streetlights, our capital projects. So to be able to map that out with data associated with it, community development, they also had a long list of data that they would like to see on the map as well. Variances, ease, the Police Department, all the records in the Record Management System can be quickly mapped out, be able to see data from the historical maps that are at the library. Administrative Services, Finance, and the Cemetery both had data that they wanted to map out. City Manager and City Clerk focused on potentially mapping out capital improvement projects, available properties, work orders. And so there was commonalities there. So every department had spatial data or mapping data that they wanted to be able to map out. Now, another common need is to have a GIS application that's easy to use that as an employee or even council can get in and use the application. We call this our Intranet application, James?
You bet, yeah. So once we get to this information, we can then package the solutions that make the most sense for the different departments that need to leverage it. Here, there's a wealth of data. There's address information, there's utility information, there's infrastructure information in this interface, and it really gives us the ability to ask and answer questions. So here, I've just queried a partial APN number. It finds the location on the map, and then it gives me the appropriate attribution about that particular location. And that concept can be applied against any of these data sets. We can also link into additional online resources. So if I wanted to tie to the county's tax assessor role for that particular parcel, I could do that and visualize what they have available to us as well. Here's a future land use, the same concept. It's the same toolset, but just different data, different queries and so forth. So if I'm interested in future land use throughout the city, I can highlight a particular location. It will take me to that particular area. I can look at aerial photography against this data and all different types of analysis and queries based on that. Here's an interesting one. This one is integrating into a building permit database. In this case, I've queried for certain building permits within an area, and that's coming dynamically out of that database, right? So there's a wealth of information, say for code enforcement violations, permits, all different types of information. Kurt had mentioned public safety and policing, and that's really what this is all about, is to be able to visualize permit data, see the application number, the address, the valuation, and so forth. So very quickly, this all can be brought to life within these types of interfaces to make the most sense for the users.
So that was the common need of enabling our staff, enabling the departments, enabling people to visualize that data. So the next common need, a lot of people wanted to, a lot of the departments that we talk to were focused on transparency and sharing information with the public. You know, the public's asking questions. How can we get them participate in local government to be able to visualize some of this data? So there was a number of public-facing applications, like the Palm Springs one that James showed earlier that were identified, such as showing capital projects. Where are all the projects around the city? If I live in an area and they have a road closed, why is that road closed? And Recreation, where are the parks? What are the amenities associated with the parks? Community Development, we're working to Larry, California now, helping them with their housing plan and visualizing all that data and sharing key elements of the housing plan with the public in a map format. So all kinds of opportunities for community development to share data with the public. The Police Department to share data about the officers that may be patrolling the city. The Library, the Library mentioned historic tour story maps and looking at some of the historic properties, the cemetery, the historical value of some of the plots in the cemetery. And then, of course, promoting the city as a destination and economic development. Great ways of taking all of this data, like I said earlier, a map is worth 1,000 records, to be able to make sense of it so we can make informed decisions as a councilperson to make an informed decision about our city by being able to see all this disparate information together. We've mentioned this, we're going to show this in a second. Capital Improvement Project, very popular around the United States and California. We helped enable Concord, California recently. We put something very similar with our capital projects. And then, this is my government services. So as a resident or a visitor, I can pull out my phone or I can sit down on my computer and click on a map, and it tells me what services are available to them. We're going to look at West Hollywood here in a second, some of the things that we helped them implement in their city. So that my government services concept. And then we can also do change detection. I can look at old aerial photography from 10 years ago and use a swipe map to see how things have changed, or I can look at historical imagery. So James, show us some of these public-facing applications, and then we'll move into some of the final stages of the presentation.
So this is a CIP application to paint that picture, tell the story of what's happening throughout the city for the CIP projects. The nice thing about this tool is it's interactive, both through the map, so I can click on a particular location. It will zoom me into that area, give me a nice, high-resolution aerial photography, and then tell me a story about what's happening at that given point. We can also group these different CIP projects based on what we're doing at any given place and time and what departments are working on certain things. So as I zoom in and out, you'll see very quickly that we have a handful, it looks like five CIP projects for the sewer and sanitation work. And each one of those will carry different projects based on the tab that I'm looking at. So real, real nice way of just painting that picture. Kurt had mentioned Parks and Recreation. This is an organization, and by the way, that was Concord that I just showed there a minute ago. This is an organization in the Georgia area outside of Atlanta, and they wanted to promote the Parks and Recreation Department through a story map. Even did some drone flyovers for some locations, so I can see the flyover that, and integrate into their online registration form to where if I wanted to reserve a particular feature within their Parks Network, I could highlight that feature and then launch a website to go ahead and reserve that park for the event that I'm looking to host as a resident. West Hollywood, this is a great citizen interaction. My City Services Toolset. If I'm new to the area, I can click on my address, and it'll give me all of the pertinent information about when my trash pickup is, when my recycling day is, what type of parking I might have in that particular area. And I can even integrate back to their system to where if I need to submit a request, so the two-way communication between the resident and the city, to where I could actually put in an event here and, you know, say that there's an issue in my neighborhood about whatever might be happening. Housing is real big, as Kurt mentioned. Leveraging some GIS tools to showcase and highlight how you're investing in your community through housing operations, leveraging some demographic information throughout the city on what's happening at any given point. Embedding maps, embedding images, links, and so forth are all very easily done through that story map capabilities. And then finally, that change detection, you know, historical districts are very important and using GIS to visualize that. This is a historical story map, and it really, it gives you a nice way of looking at the current, modern-day look at a particular feature, but also bringing it to life in the history of that particular area there as well. So this, you can just swipe this back and forth. You can do this with aerial photography. You can do this with satellite imagery. This just happens to be an image associated with their historical district.
So great opportunities on engaging the public, and they can even contribute to some of this as well. And so another thing that we looked at for Pacific Grove is organizing. What's some tools that we can do? And we've shown you a lot of things. And again, a six-month project, we're boiling down to about 15 minutes of some of the highlights, but one of the things we want to do is to be able to organize our data in a hub, a public-facing hub and internal hub that allows us to visualize and manage the data in a way that makes sense to everybody. So GIS for the entire community, as it were. And then another part of this package of software that every city government in California uses this technology and counties, most of you probably use this certainly as a Google Maps-type interface or something like that, but operations dashboards are very popular as well in the city identified opportunities here. I'm going to look at some dashboards for housing. I'm going to look at citywide metrics. I'm going to look at my work orders and projects. So James, just show us a couple of those real quick.
You bet. So this is the hub concept that Kurt had mentioned. This is just essentially a library of GIS tools and applications and data. And then when we launch this tools, we can then embed, you know, these dashboard concepts. This is a code enforcement and building permit dashboard. This is dynamically bringing that data to life from that ERP system, and it's completely interactive. So if I want to filter down certain permits by status, I could highlight that particular permit type, and then you'll see the charts and graph will change referencing whatever I have a filter associated with it. So very easily done, bringing that data to life and visualizing it for the use. Dashboards can be deployed in all different departments for whatever concept and maybe is, might be at hand.
Okay. All right, so those were the enterprise needs, and there was some individual needs for various departments. And then the next phase of the project, and we're not going to give you all the details of this today, that's where we get into, how do we make it work? From a governance and a human resource perspective, from a data and databases, setting up our IT infrastructure, our software. And so we went through that whole section of the project to define all that in the documentation we have available to you. And then I think this is important, is the why we're doing things. And one of the reasons why we did GIS is to align with the city's goals. So we took a good look at the goal set by City Council, by you, and we see those here, you're familiar with these. But how can GIS help us achieve these goals? And when I took a look at these, and when we took a look at these, GIS really lends itself to achieving this goal. So, you know, environmental stewardship, to be able to have some mapping components to help us with that. Recycling, wastewater and water division, mapping out our assets, cracking that, optimizing that, sustainable tourism. So we go through in the document and talk about how GIS supports these initiatives and how GIS can really make this successful. And that's important. That's the why we're doing this. And then the last part of the plan was how we're going to implement it. So we wanted to look at multiple options. And one thing we want to leave with you guys today is that it's not an all or nothing. There's all kinds of ways that you can configure this, you can do it over different timeframes. So we looked at multiple options, and you can see the Gantt chart here. Option A was to hire a full-time GIS technician, somebody to go out and create the data, maintain the data. Another option is to use a contractor with, and enable some of the people in the departments to contribute. And then option C is to lean a lot on your existing IT staff to do some of the work. And for each one of those, there was a kind of a different implementation plan as we see on the next slide, some different monetary considerations with those as well. So each one of the options has a different final investment associated with it as well. So the bottom line is everything that we just showed you is achievable. It's exciting. We've helped various communities resolve. Windsor, California, they kind of started with nothing and have a fully built-out GIS, and a lot of cities are doing that. So it's a great time technologically because the technology is so much easier to use than it was when I was the GIS coordinator, GIS manager. So anyway, hopefully we stay within our allotted time, and we wanted to open up the questions.
Thank you very much. If you would stop sharing your screen, that would be helpful at this point, and we'll go off for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a really interesting presentation, and I actually made it halfway through reading the written, attached agenda report presentation. Of course, it was a lot of Greek to me, but, oh, one of those is that in that lengthy presentation, it would be very nice if they geolocated Monterey and Pacific Grove and Monterey area, California, not Mexico, because there were a lot of misspellings of Monterey, especially as headers. But this is, looks like an incredibly useful program for all departments, Public Works especially. And our ID, IT department certainly needs some help in integration synthesis systems, you know, to make everything work because we are pretty, it takes us so many steps to try and get to where and what we're trying to find as far as information goes. So the public would be greatly served by something. It would be a great way to keep better tabs on STR licenses and illegal use. I don't know. I think it would help departments do their jobs much better and would be probably a very good investment to help use our, to help give another tool to our current staff to do their jobs better. And that would be incredibly useful for the whole community. So me, a lot, I guess, but I've been managing very, with a great deal of difficulty, the systems we have in place now, and an easier, more integrated one would be lovely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Peak, and council members and the presenters. This is exciting stuff. Pacific Grove is a resource-dense community. And from all the coastal resources, the sand dune resources, the tree resources, the historical resources. And as the speaker said before, the issues associated with our infrastructure, their watershed, everything about it tends to indicate that Pacific Grove would be well-served, the citizens would be well-served, the staff, everybody would be well-served to follow through with this, ideally at the highest level, at Level A. It looked like it was about, I don't know, $700,000. The lowest level was around $300,000. I'm not sure if you can, like, inch your way toward it, but I think maybe that's the way to go, is start low, but don't, don't not start. In other words, go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michelle, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I was just watching the presentation, and I really didn't review much in the packet yet, but my one concern is you see all of these information systems that people get used to using, and then all of a sudden they're hacked, and you have to pay to get your information unlocked. So I hope there's a lot of safety and, you know, protocols in keeping our information safe and hack-free. The price tag seems a little high, but I think, as Anthony said, it looks like it's a good way to go, and I think the visualization that they showed was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion. This is a report, so we're not voting on anything. Councilmember Paduri?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation from the group here. I actually just heard us the- Um, I actually just perused the agenda packet and I had a couple of questions in the packet. Uh, so there was a mention about the the current governance uh, and future governance. The current governance estimates the number of users to be nine. Future governance has the number of users to be eighteen. I couldn't quite follow how it grew from nine to eighteen. And this need not be explained right now if you want, after the presentation is fine, uh, after the meeting uh, formally. But I I just wanted some uh, clarity around how the number of users grew from nine to eighteen and those recommendations. Uh, and I had a question around, uh, there was a mention about PIE services, which the uh, city is currently uh, contracting with. Uh, in all the options that were presented, uh, does it mean we are going to uh, let go of PIE contracting for all the proposed options in the future?
So I I would just add that the the, each one of the options has some use of a consultant. So whoever that consultant is, that could be, it could be any, any uh, GIS consultant, which I think they're they're one of those. So um, so that, I guess that ultimately would be a decision once you guys move forward and which which one you get, which of the options you go with and then of course contracting some of that out. So it could, there'll be a preferred vendor, it could be the one that you want to do it.
Okay, so so to clarify that, uh, they, that when when we refer to the future options with uh, potentially a GIS um, consultant, that could again be PIE services.
It could be, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this was very comprehensive, so thank you.
Council member Clady.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I I'm very grateful for this needs assessment for I, it is an important tool. It impacts just about every department within the city. And it's uh, it's going to allow, it's going to leverage a lot more uh, services to be provided as a result. I'm glad council member Pedori mentioned a PIA service. The principal, Carrie Steeble, has been with uh, doing GIS consulting work for over fifteen years and has done an outstanding job. And we uh, we uh, how to put this? We've economized in in compensating him and uh, it's just my hope. And and yet even so, he's been able to de- uh, deliver a lot of important packages to us and has done an outstanding job. Uh, so I, you know, I use pgparcel.net all the time, have for years. Uh, that's something Carrie did for us. So um, I think the needs assessment points us in a lot of, uh, in a few different directions that we could go, include including uh, retaining an outside consultant. And it would certainly be my hope and, you know, my expectation that we would interact with uh, Mr. Steeble and and PIE services to uh, see how he might be interested in um, in bidding on whatever uh, whatever route we uh, we want to go down. So. Good presentation, but I'd like to see PIE services integrated into the discussion uh, as we go forward. Thank you.
I'd like to also add that this was an excellent presentation. I liked the data dump in the report, was a little uh, long and uh, um, and non-IT person, uh, hard to follow along at times. But I appreciate having that information. Um, and I uh, I absolutely support uh, better, uh, I'll call it a GIS backbone for spatial data and in particular, it's seems to be a no-brainer for public works and uh, the planning department at the very least. I think that uh, there's, there's a lot of complexity, I'll call it bells and whistles, that could be added on um, as as you described in the presentation. But I think uh, really the the core um, functions or the core need for maps and spatial data is something that if we can do it very well, this will actually pay for itself by making our our planning department and our public works department uh, more effective. So I would just say focus on the basics and uh, then we'll see how that goes. The the other things, the the storyboards, um, kind of nice to have, but I'm not critical at this point. I was just looking at the numbers. And um, oh, and I thought Michelle brought up an excellent point. Um, security is is really a critical feature for all our um, IT systems in the city. So you need to always keep that in mind. Thank you. Any, anyone else from council wishing to make a comment? All right. Well, thanks again um, for us, for being here this evening and we'll um, be in touch, I'm sure.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
On to uh, council and staff announcements, the turn to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, council, the public and members of staff. The council did have a closed session on October twenty-seventh. There was a single item on the agenda and that was the city manager's performance evaluation. The purpose of the meeting was for the uh, the council to meet to discuss process, format and timing of the city manager's evaluation for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, there was no uh, action taken in that meeting.
Mr. Harvey, do you have any announcements for us tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not. Thank you.
Council men, council member Emilio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just uh, uh, another shout out for November eleventh, uh, Veterans Day, uh, Lovers Point, nine thirty to ten thirty. Um, and there'll be uh, several uh, venues uh, between that time. And uh, the public is invited to that uh, to help celebrate our uh, veterans. Thank you.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to commend our police department and Chief Madalone on a recent arrest pertaining to burglaries that were happening in Pacific Grove. Um, so on behalf of our community and the residents who were victims of these crimes, thank you very much. Um, I also wanted to thank the bid, the chamber and the many businesses who participated in the downtown trick-or-treat event. Uh, my kids and I had a great time and it was really exciting to see so many community members and their kids out in costume uh, and enjoying our downtown. Thanks.
Council member Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to um, mention to the public that uh, the city has now a a small survey for financial reporting. Uh, and that uh, survey closes on eleven twenty-one. Uh, the intent of the survey is to really improve how we can provide um, financial reports to to everybody. Uh, thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback on uh, on that announcement. If you go on, at least on on my uh, laptop, on the uh, homepage for Pacific Grove, you can reach the survey in the little black box on the lower right under alerts. And it's called uh, Take Financial Reporting Survey. And I I believe it's three questions. It's very painless. Please give us your thoughts. Thank you. Right. Well, without uh, further council announcements, we'll move on to general public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I noticed the HRC and BNRC meetings are still scheduled with overlapping times on the same day, November sixteenth. Members of the public can't attend meetings at the same time. I have written staff, the chairmans of the committees, but have not heard anything back and nothing has changed. It's coming up fairly quickly. If something is going to change, it should be rescheduled now because scheduling meetings at the same time is just a very bad idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Andrew Kay, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council persons. Uh, uh, this is, may come out as a question, but uh, I I haven't found any status online about our sales tax issue. Uh, it seems like we're still losing eighty-seven thousand dollars a month. Uh, and it's been going on for like six or eight months, or I think it's eight months now. And that comes to about six hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, last week, we were talking at the city council meeting about maybe financing a fire truck because we don't have the money and the fund for it. And losing six hundred and seven thousand is almost the cost of a six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar truck. So it'd be great to find out uh, what's happening with our sales tax and uh, what the status of it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm very concerned, as Inga is, about the scheduling of the HRC meeting at the same time as BNRC's meeting. Um, when HRC was told they need to reschedule because of the Thanksgiving holiday, they were given two choices, but they weren't told that one of the choices was BNRC's day, whereas the other one was not, was was completely open. Um, and I, that, that absolutely should be rescheduled because we can't be both places. And I regularly attend both meetings. And HRC is one hour before BNRC and they've been having long, long, long meetings because of the deletions from the HRI and the fact that they only get to meet once every two months uh, still because of the shortage of staff. Um, I also was hoping that um, uh, Native American Heritage Month uh, would be acknowledged by council. Um, particularly considering um, our um, it, the wealth of of tribal cultural resources i- in our coastal zone and beyond. Um, and and I'm hoping that at the next council meeting in November, perhaps um, uh, some acknowledgement, it can, meaningful acknowledgement can be made. I'd be happy to help um, any council member who who would like to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmelita, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you for your service. I just want to give a shout out to our monarch butterflies. We have a lot of them. I went uh, last week and saw them and they're beautiful. It's very, very exciting to see them. So thank you all.
Thank, thank you.
Uh, no further hands are raised.
All right, we'll move on to.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a quick response on the status of the sales tax or not?
Sure.
Okay, uh, it, a hearing is big, is scheduled to be held next Tuesday, November ninth in the Sacramento Superior Court on the topic of the sales tax with the city's effort to have it be instated. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Does council have any items to wish to pull from the consent agenda? Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull um, eight C, like cat, and then I'd like to make sure that we discuss nine A. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wishing to pull a consent agenda item?
I do see some hand raised, hands raised, Mr. Mayor. Um, Carmelita, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Apologies, I didn't lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to pull seven B, please.
Thank you. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
I was also going to request seven B be pulled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so seven uh, B would become eleven B. And eight C. Um, let's see what's.
Twelve, um, Your Honor.
Yes, seven, eight, eight C. Um.
Oh, D.
I'm assuming this isn't a lengthy discussion. Council member McAdams, are you anticipating a lengthy discussion on this one?
No, not at all. Thank you.
Okay, let's, let's make that twelve A and push everything down.
Okay.
That, that's a a report. And for nine A, if we could have that discussion immediately following the consent agenda. With those modifications, may I have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda?
I move to approve the modified consent agenda.
I'll second it.
And a vote, please. And I'll I'll note that Mayor Pro temporary Smith is present.
Yes, sir. Uh, council member Tomlinson?
Aye.
Council member Emilio?
Aye.
Council members Pedori?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Clady?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
I actually have a comment. I I think, wasn't it eight B that was pulled, not eight C? Or I'm gonna just totally off base, it could be.
I believe that was eight C.
It was C. Aye, then.
Thank you. And Mayor Peak?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero to uh, approve the modified consent agenda.
Thank you. So uh, we've just approved council minutes from October twentieth. Thank you, Ms. Kandell. We have ratified an agreement with Collins Electrical Company for temporary power services for eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and nine plus contingency. Thank you, Mr. Go. We have held a second reading and adopted an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two debt operating capital budget. Thank you, Ms. Hannah and Ms. Legaska. We have held a second reading and adopted an ordinance to amend the uh, municipal code two point one six purchasing systems and procedures. Thank you, Ms. Pope. And we've received the following reports, treasurer's quarterly report from Ms. Legaska, a first quarter budget report from Ms. Hannah. Thank you both. And we've received minutes from the BNRC from September. Thank you, Mr. Go. And the planning commission, uh, minutes from September. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. And that concludes the consent agenda, which brings us to item nine A. Mr. Harvey, our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as everyone knows, this is a customary item uh, that relates to the global COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, the only um, additional of interest item, I think, for the city council this evening relates to the mask mandate. And for this portion, um, I would like to defer to our human resources director, Ms. Letitia Livian. Ms. Livian?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council members, members of the public and staff. Um, so this week, Monterey County uh, went into the what's called the substantial tier for rate of transmission. Um, as you may recall, the Board of Supervisors passed an ordinance for when the county reaches a substantial or high-risk tier, that there would be an indoor mask ordinance in effect. Um, so basically the uh, the ordinance is in effect now, but it will be uh, basically monitored and regulated starting this Friday. Um, staff here at City Hall and other city facilities already practice wearing uh, their mask indoors. However, as of Friday, that will be a hard, hard start for everybody that may visit our facilities and also for staff. In addition to that, working with the City of Monterey Fire Department, they're going to be offering a booster clinic for our city employees as well as other local city employees next week as well. Some more information will be going out to our staff. And that concludes my report.
Any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council comment? Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sure if you are a parent to a younger child, you heard that children ages five through 11 have been added to approval for the Pfizer vaccine. And so, starting tomorrow, you can go to the MyTurn website and make an appointment online there, or contact your pediatrician. I also am aware that the Monterey County Office of Education is working with school sites and local partners for some vaccine clinics for school-aged children. So you can contact your school for information about that, and you can also check the Monterey County Health Department website. They'll be posting pop-up clinics. There are two already this weekend. One in Salinas and one in Solidad. I'm sure I am not alone in saying this, that this day could not come soon enough. And I would encourage everyone in your household to get vaccinated if you haven't been already. Thank you.
I see no further comment. We'll move on to the next agenda item, eleven A, amend municipal code to comply with SB 1383. Caleb Schneider, Environmental Program Manager, welcome.
Caleb, I think you're muted.
Mr. Harvey, is there someone that could help out Mr. Schneider?
Possibly. He is lead on this. I would ask the Public Works Director to advise me if we think that this is something that we could have possibly, no, I think, I think this is, he's lead on this one, but Mr. Go, are you on the, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, Mr. Harvey, I am here, and I know that Mr. Schneider is the lead on this, and he has the technical background.
Perhaps he can just call in. Yeah, so Mr. Schneider could just quickly call in, Mr. Mayor, if you could just, sorry, indulge us for a moment, apologize for the inconvenience. Mr. Schneider is the one who is most knowledgeable on this topic.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Could we possibly hear twelve C, that Adam McAdams pulled while Caleb finishes, fixes it?
Why not? Right. The next item is seven B, second reading of an ordinance to amend the city salary classification schedule. Ms. Livian, Human HR Director, and then Harvey, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for the suggestion to move on. We apologize for the technical difficulty. This item was on the consent calendar. I do not have a presentation this evening, but as this is an ordinance for a proposed salary schedule change, comes before the City Council for two reads. I am here, if there are specific questions, as is Ms. Livian. So thank you. We await your questions.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Thank you. There were multiple important reasons to vote against the salary reclassification and promotion at the first reading, and I appreciate those on council who recognized the inadvisability of the measure. First, there is no need for both Assistant City Manager and Deputy City Manager positions tacked onto existing positions. In years past, the police chief filled in ably for the City Manager at council meetings when City Manager was away, which was a rare occasion. Perhaps the Administrative Services Director could assume those duties. I don't think that requires a new salary classification, but it's extravagant to have a Deputy City Manager as well. Next, it's not advisable to link the Public Works Director position to a Deputy City Manager position. I'm particularly concerned about the City Manager's mischaracterization of my public comment at the October 20th meeting as a personal attack on the Public Works Director. I gave a description of behavior by a public official in his official capacity, behavior of a type that has occurred repeatedly year after year, disrespecting the public and the law. I emailed details of seven examples from the past four years where the Public Works Director has not demonstrated the skills or judgment that are needed for a Deputy City Manager. The proposed ordinance says the new salary classifications are in recognition of his leadership role, which is seriously lacking. Perhaps the City Manager thought I was inappropriately embarrassing the Public Works Director? Please consider how the people of the Alone Coast To No and Esalen Nation feel about public works projects, at least twice that we know of, excavating and designated archaeological and sacred sites. As a result of these actions, one disregarding coastal commission permitting requirements, even after a violation was filed, one disregarding sequo mitigation measures, the human remains of tribal ancestors may have been irretrievably lost. Consider how BNRC feels when the Public Works Director authorized clearing of vast areas in George Washington Park, boldly disregarding BNRC recommendations that were approved by council three months earlier to guide maintenance in George Washington Park. If there were accountability in the city government, then the public work directors' serious failures in responsibility and judgment would not continue, and a Deputy City Manager position and large salary increase would not be created for him. Please do not approve the salary classification amendment for Public Works Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm asking you to please reconsider your previous vote on October 20th. In a city of just over fifteen thousand people, not only do we not need an Assistant City Manager and Deputy City Manager, these employees are already well compensated for the jobs they now hold. Most of the cities used for comparison in the added salary survey compare cities of a much larger population size with far larger revenues and budgets. Yet Pacific Grove's current compensation fits right in there, even with its smaller size. The taxpayer monies that will be spent on these unnecessary promotion levels will be much better spent on something like the GIS package to better help all departments do a better job more easily benefiting the citizen community. Or, a wildlife protection officer. Pacific Grove needs more boots-on-the-ground personnel. New ideas, visions, and expanding expertise to cover more community needs. Please, council, rethink your priorities of what is best for your community, the citizens who elected you to be our representatives, not just rewarding those members of existing staff that you personally think are deserving. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrew Kay, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I respectfully request that the vote for the salary increases be reversed, and it be a no vote. Do not increase the salaries. My request is based on the budget for Pacific Grove versus the comparison cities. The staff provided a chart attached in the package where it's comparing Pacific Grove to Monterey County. Pacific Grove has a budget of thirty-nine million dollars. Monterey County has a budget of 1.7 billion dollars. The City of Monterey has a budget of 164.7 million dollars. Salinas, 202 million dollars. Monterey County has 5,499 employees. Yes, they need an assistant manager. The City of Monterey has 371 full-time employees, 16 regular part-time employees, and 216 seasonal employees. Salinas has 606.5 equivalent full-time employees. PG has only 96. When these three entities are removed, the County of Monterey, the City of Monterey, and Salinas are removed from the staff report, our Public Works Director is on par with Capitola and Carmel. A similar result also occurs with the Finance Director when the major cities and counties are removed from that comparison. PG is only three square miles, is a bedroom community with no major income. The largest income entity in the city is the public schools. We have no Target, we have no Costco, we have no car dealerships. Where will this money be coming from? At the last City Council meeting, it was mentioned that this is only sixty-nine thousand dollars. That is not six, that's sixty-nine thousand dollars that could be used to add a new roof, not patch the roof on Chautauqua Hall. We could paint Chautauqua Hall, which hasn't been painted in years. We can improve our parks. We could improve our low-rated streets and add bike lanes to our streets, and other items for the residents. In addition, if you take that sixty-nine thousand and you multiply it over ten years, that comes to 790,000 dollars. That's more than enough to pay for a new fire truck. It's not just sixty-nine thousand dollars. It is a lot of money. I want to thank you, and thank you, and vote for the residents, not against them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the City Council. As you know, Pacific Grove is a small town, but it requires a city manager with the education, knowledge, and experience to manage the complex issues of our coastal city. Does Pacific Grove have an experienced Assistant City Manager who lives nearby to take over when necessary to assume the role as Acting City Manager and to manage the city's diverse departments, such as city planning, economic development, or the police departments, et cetera? What will happen if Pacific Grove requires an emergency services during a crisis or disaster? But the city or the county where the Public Works Director and family lives has simultaneous emergency crises? Is the Public Works Director knowledgeable and experienced to serve in the absence of our City Manager? And would he or she be able to look after Pacific Grove's emergency needs, especially if he or she lives in another county and another city far away that could be blocked off by whatever emergencies are going on on our roads? What does Pacific Grove need? Why does Pacific Grove need two backup positions? If it does, I think something may already be broken that needs fixing, but not another person to fill in during the full-time City Manager's absence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmelita, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I, I, I'm sorry, I did it again.
Thank you. Michelle, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Yes, I'd just like to join in Anthony Chiani's comments. I think it's unnecessary to have so many backup to our City Manager position, but also the fact that the Public Works Director apparently doesn't even live in the city either. It's my understanding that the City Manager position was required to be a full-time resident of Pacific Grove. So, you know, the fact that we have a City Manager who is a part-time resident, and now you want to do a backup who's a part-time resident, or is not a resident, is kind of loses its worth, and I just don't feel it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're now bringing back to council for any comments, discussion. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I, I think having three employees with the job title, or having, you know, three employees with City Manager and their job title is, it's, it's, it's crazy. It's, it's, you can't find it anywhere. So, you know, I, I think it's, I don't think there's justification for it, as I said last time this item was before us. I don't believe, we should have three employees with job, with City Manager and their job title. You know, we're only a city of fifteen thousand. We're a very small survey, and that kind of follows, or fifteen thousand residents, and that follows follows into this salary survey that's now included in the second read. It wasn't included in the first read. You know, Mr. Kubica rightly points out that the salary survey is comparing apples and oranges, and as a result, the mean is being skewed beyond credibility. I, including Monterey County as, you know, in the survey, that's just not, you know, a valid piece of criteria to determine what the salary should be for Pacific Grove. It's just not, and so that being said, I can't support this. I, I simply don't think it's justified. I think there are other things we can be spending sixty-nine thousand dollars here, and I don't even know if that's a real number. But I think we should compensate our employees based on correct salary surveys and not use ones that skew the mean significantly by incorporating values that come from an agency with a budget, you know, light years larger than ours, and has more significant and a greater number of responsibilities. So I didn't support this last time, and I can't support it again for all the reasons that were raised by the callers, and I'm glad, I'm glad the residents called in. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you to the callers that spoke, as well as the comments that we received via email. We did receive quite, quite a lot. The Police Administrative Services Manager, Public Information Officer, I, I fully support. She's already been doing that work, and I think that it will be very beneficial for the city to have, you know, one person responsible for distributing the information. As far as the, you know, the Assistant City Manager, you know, I do agree that perhaps we don't need two employees taking on that name, or taking on that title. And also, And also, um, something that Ms. Chiani had sent uh, via email about, you know, what if there is a a physical disaster or, you know, a, a good example, something that I thought about is, um, when the car crashed in the public works building. And, you know, how, how would something like that be possible for, um, an employee to, you know, wear the hat of the public works director and then also wear the hat of the assistant city manager? And so there are, um, there are times when I do think that that is conflicting, um, and also too much responsibility. Um, and so for me, I do think that, um, if the council, you know, is interested in, in in considering this, it does make sense to have this Administrative Services Director Assistant City Manager. Um, I would be, I did support this, um, prior and but I have sort of reconsidered and, you know, really thought about having those two other, um, roles to to have, um, Assistant City Manager attached to them. Also, if you read the, um, the descriptions, you know, for me with the Public Works Director Deputy City Manager, like, there's not really a lot of city management, um, uh, responsibilities versus with Ms. Hannah, you know, she is taking on um, the leases and sort of this upper executive, um, reporting and management. And so that makes more sense to me. Um, and I would, you know, be willing to support those two. Um, and I would not be able to support the, um, the deputy portion. So, uh, if when we get to the, um, motion, if it's possible to split the motion, that's fine. And if not, then I just won't be able to support um, this tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate the time spent on the messages, uh, sent to us as well as the reading of them tonight during the public comment period. Um, and all of my colleagues', uh, opinions as well. Um, I just, I still, uh, am feeling the way I was feeling two weeks ago. I, I support this. I think that giving credit where, where these folks are already functioning in these capacities and doing a fabulous job, uh, is what we're doing here. I believe, I sup- um, I think that this promotes them to have growth and career trajectory. It will, they have the, um, uh, it will help with retention. They, the city manager, also I'll just say he does live in the city full-time uh, at this moment and forever forward really while he's in this capacity. So he no longer is in out of, you know, living out of the city, um, the once, one day a week or any of that. So, um, as an update. And I, I think that as a person who has many times in my life been asked to wear dual hats in the case of emergencies or one-off situations, it can be done and it can be done by high caliber, high functioning leaders. And these two people are that. And so for that reason, I, I think that, you know, getting wrapped around the actual on titles um, is not something that I'm, uh, I'm worried about. So, I support this, Mayor, and I'm happy to make a motion.
Um, uh, thank you. Sounds like there's two potential motions, uh, on, i- in the offing. I'll, I'll just add that, um, I also don't think that, uh, today our organization, it's warranted to add uh, two additional city, city manager titles. But I, in regards to paying the salaries that are competitive, I would, I would welcome a relook at that. I think that there's some valid points about the, the size of the, uh, the cities and the scope of the jobs in those particular cities. I, but I'd also open up that discussion. Now, we've, uh, been using a ninety-five percentile. And we are a high housing cost city. I would be, I'd be happy to come back and discuss the appropriate, uh, salaries for key individuals, you know, in our city. But right now, the way this particular motion is wor- uh, is worded, I can't support that. I, I would, uh, support the adding the, the, uh, uh, Public Information Officer and that salary. Um, it does create a very long, uh, title for Ms. French Francis, but I would support that. So, um, I've got a couple of pieces. We could talk about, Councilmember McAdams. Did you want to, uh, split the question?
Um, actually, I, I, you know, I'm intrigued with what you're, what you're speaking to, you know, and, and Councilmember Tomlinson mentioned salary too. I mean, I believe absolutely that our employees need to be compensated, um, you know, if they are in fact taking on um, extra responsibilities. And we do like to practice that, um, ninety-five percentile. You know, full package. So, you know, I mean, I would be open to returning, um, with all of that, you know, information and versus, you know, changing the title. Um, just perhaps doing a, an increase of the salary. Um, but I also agree with regards to the Public, uh, Information Officer. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know Mr. Harvey's hand's been up, but I'll, I'll go ahead and make a comment. Uh, I'm not changing my vote and, uh, I know, uh, rather than me going through the list of what I've talked about last time, it is a daunting, uh, task to hire a new management team or a manager. And I just know that, um, there, someone's being, uh, recruited. So, I think we need to keep our management, uh, there and, uh, I support this, uh, motion. I support the, uh, second reading.
Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, your honor. I, I, I support the line of, you know, thought you have here, which is to to look at the salaries, uh, and not focus on these two titles uh, as a means of justifying them. I, I, again, a city our size having, you know, a job description of city manager three times is just, it's, it's done, it's a, it's unnecessary and it's unheard of. So I would propose that we get a, a salary survey that provides a credible and, and, you know, basically something that is comparable to what our size and responsibilities are for these positions. Uh, the Mon- including Monterey County just skews this salary survey beyond credibility. So, if we want to give, uh, recognized job well done and, uh, that initiates a new salary survey that uh, that properly looks at the positions, uh, for some of our size cities, that's great. And we can provide that. We can provide a, 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 a new salary schedule. But I can't support doing this the way it's being done currently. So I would like to see, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, conduct a new salary survey based on similar sized cities and job responsibilities and use that as the determination for making new salary adjustments for the position of Public Works Directory, Public Works Director and Municipal Services Director.
I'll second that motion. I believe. Okay, Councilmember Pedori.
Mr. Pedori, you are on mute.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I was, are we discussing the motion?
Yes, we are.
Okay, um, I wanted the city manager to comment specifically on the, um, the point about the Monterey County being used, uh, as part of the salary. Uh, could you please elaborate, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, happy to do so, Councilmember Pedori through the mayor. And in fact, uh, as this topic has been discussed, that is why I raised my hand. I wanted to provide some clarification. Um, so the methodology for the salary survey that we use, and this is the same methodology that has been in place in the entire uh, nearly six-year tenure that I've been here, is one that is referred to as utilizing comparator agencies. And a comparator agency is not necessarily one that is similar to the city of Pacific Grove as far as its size, uh, or the number of employees uh, or, uh, the size of the budget. Instead, it's a potential employer that the employees in Pacific Grove could go to. And so that's why we look at the county of Monterey. That's why we look at the city of Salinas. That's why we look at the city of Monterey because they, um, are options for our employees. Now, in recognizing that we are a small city, we have a target total compensation pay philosophy of ninety-five percent, uh, of the median compared to our agency. So, in doing that, you already are narrowing those that are at the high end and the bottom end, and you're instead just looking at ninety-five percent of that one agency that's in the middle. So that is the methodology that is used for the salary survey. These salary surveys were done by a third, uh, party, a professional organization. That's the, you know, the, they're one of their primary uh, scopes of work, Bryce Consulting, they're well-known in this area, uh, a very reputable firm. So I just wanted to make sure that council understood that is how those are put together. And that's the same methodology that we use for all of our salary surveys, for all the employee associations. Anytime we, we do a survey, that is what's used. The other thing I just really needed to, to point out quickly is that in the example cited of the physical recent disaster at the corporate yard, the first management employee on the scene was our public works director. We, as management employees, are connected to our first responders. Wherever we are, if we're in the town or out of the town, uh, we are notified by our, uh, emergency personnel when there is an issue. And depending on who is closest, we make a determination who can get there the fastest. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Um, I just want to make a couple of, a couple of points. I, I think this comparative city salary philosophy um, is flawed. And as an example, we've hired people from far outside of this area. Um, I think that, uh, for the, um, executive positions in our city and the pay that the surveys that we do, or, excuse me, the, when we look for employees, the recruitment is, is initially, it's across the entire state. And so thinking that our job pool is only people, uh, that, uh, would live in northern or, um, Monterey County or the peninsula, I, I think is, is flawed. But as I said before, I think the question of this ninety-five percent, I think we can discuss that. Um, so, that, to me, that's a good reason to go back and rethink how, uh, we um, use these, uh, salary surveys. And I'm thinking we need to look broader and look at job responsibilities, scope of job responsibilities. Absolutely, that should be part of it. And, um, I, in regards to, uh, the comment about who was, who was at the Public Works Yard uh, on, on Saturday morning when, when we had the fire and the unfortunate accident. I, I was told it was, uh, Mr. Rocky Panero.
That's right.
So anyhow, um, but, uh, you know, to, to, uh, Mr. Go's credit, uh, when I, when I arrived at about nine-thirty, he, he was there. So I appreciate him, um, uh, coming from home, uh, in the morning. Uh, Councilmember Cluddy.
One final thought, your honor. Based on the city manager's comments that this salary survey methodology of using quote-unquote comparator agencies. Uh, you know, you're looking at a job based on what they might apply for. But it doesn't necessarily mean, and there's a huge presumption here based on the city manager's description. There's a huge presumption that they would even qualify. And going from a small city like Pacific Grove to running the county monitor of Monterey, that's, that's just a leap that I can't, I can't, a leap in logic that I just can't take. So, I think we should think about how we're going to do our salary surveys. How we're going to actually come back and then look at the salaries for these two employees. And I'm more than, if it, if it's justified, I am more than happy to vote yes, but I don't want to do it just simply by adding city manager to their title. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson, you wanted to make a motion.
Yes, sir. I move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
May we have a vote, please?
Point of order, Mayor. Didn't we have another motion on the table?
Uh, we did, but did, this wasn't, uh, um, I will, I'll talk to our city attorney on this one. This was not in, it, it was not an amendment. Do we do that one first? Maybe we should.
As I understand it, there was a motion on the table. As I understand it, the, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson offered this as an amendment to that motion. So the amendment should be voted upon first.
I think it's just the other way around.
Well, I'm not, I, I'm, I'm going to call it. Councilmember Cluddy, you made the motion first. Uh, Councilmember Tomlinson asked if I was ready for a motion and, um,
Okay.
I declined at that time and I asked her later. So, um, yeah. So, Councilmember Tomlinson's motion, let's have a vote on that. First.
Thank you, Mayor.
But I need to know what one we're voting on.
We, I'm, uh, I'm have, I'm the recommendation of the staff, the original recommendation, correct?
That's what we're voting on? Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Pedori?
Aye.
McAdams?
No.
Cluddy?
No.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
No.
Motion carries four to three.
Now, I'm, uh, looking for some help from our city attorney. Uh, does that make the original motion?
I believe it does make the original motion moot.
All right. That could come back later on. Um, okay. Now moving on. Um, and Mr. Caleb Schneider, is he with us now? Can, can we hear you?
Uh, I hope you can hear.
All right. So we're now on to item eleven A, back to it. Um, amend municipal code to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. Caleb Schneider, Environmental Program Manager.
Great. And thank you for having me, uh, Mayor and council. If I could just get confirmation, you can see my PowerPoint presentation.
Yes. I can see it.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mayor and council for having me here and all those who are participating, paving from home. Uh, I'm going to speak with you today about SB thirteen eighty-three implementation and the specific component, which is the municipal code update, which is required as part of this, uh, legislation. So Senate Bill, uh, thirteen eighty-three, the state law, which is going, uh, into effect, uh, it has been cascading in effect, but the most, uh, immediate component that's going into effect is, uh, June- is June, sorry, January first, twenty twenty-two, when the city will be required to provide organic collection services to all single multifamily households. And we're already doing commercial, but the law will include commercial there too, as well as a reduction in the food that goes to the landfill. So there, the push is to get food that could be edible, get it to people who are hungry, and to prevent more organics from going into the landfill, which then leads to greenhouse gases being released. So our requirements are to provide those services, which we've already negotiated with our handlers of our solid waste. We're, we're, we're ready to provide that service here in the, the next year. The component that we're talking about today is providing the enforcement actions necessary, which includes amending the current municipal code. So to date, staff, myself included, has been working with the Technical Advisory Committee, which is a group of individuals from all across the Monterey County public agencies. So every city and agency, the county is all incorporated in that, as well as the haulers themselves and key stakeholders at the landfills and that run and administer the programs, both in Salinas and the Monterey Peninsula. That group has determined and been in a lot of discussions over the last year. And we've collaborated on a lot of the information that we presented, including this municipal code. Now, that municipal code was provided by HF and H Consulting as a, as a, not quite a draft, but a template. And then each municipality or jurisdiction has augmented and adjusted and ran it through their own legal teams to create a specific code that is for that jurisdiction. So we've already received presentations in the past from HF and H and the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. And I've spoken about solid wastes over the last year. So hopefully, none of this information has been new so far. I just want to recap on one item the city council did do was in preparation for SB thirteen eighty-three implementation, the council approved a one-point-eight-percent rate increase for specifically the SB thirteen eighty-three implementation. So our proposed action today is to update the municipal code, which will provide us an enforcement component of the of the municipal code. Now, while that enforcement component already exists inside the municipal code, there's just a few key things that are going to be added to the municipal code that would then be enforceable. So you won't see an enforcement section necessary in this proposed code. Another component there is the ability to provide food recovery services through our jurisdictional authority over businesses and those that produce food for human consumption. There's a whole lot of components that go to that, which are well outside this presentation now, but they are included as part of the code. And then the use of compost. So there is a section in the code that, the new code, that discusses compost, and it's going to be a part of the building code, in which it's going to be updated somewhere in the future. But it needs to be included now as part of this code in order to make a market and help develop better business practices with regards to landscaping and those such activities. And I just want to reiterate that the deadline for implementation and providing the service for the, the public is January first, twenty twenty-two. My recommendation is to introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to amend Pacific Grove Municipal Code Title Nine. This would be adding chapter nine-point-one-seven, titled "The Reduction of Short-Lived Climate Pollutants" in compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three and to direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney. And I'm ready for your questions when you'd like.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion on the item, Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Mr. Schneider, for bringing this forward and staying up to date with all of the moving parts. I definitely support the recommendation that is before us this evening, and I'm happy to make a motion.
Please do so.
I move that we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to amend Pacific Grove Municipal Code Title Nine, adding chapter nine dot one-seven, "Reduction of Short-Lived Climate Pollutants" in compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three and direct publication of a summary of the ordinance as approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Schneider, for moving this forward. This is something that's going to impact all the residents and all the businesses in town. On your slide, you indicated, you stated that you are working with the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee. That's to the advisory committee, to the, I'm not sure I had the title correct, the managing director of the Waste Management District? Or to the board of, to the district board of directors?
If I may, Mayor, it is a technical advisory committee to the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. So it's where we talk trash amongst public administrators and solid waste of the, of this nature. So in that group, we, we, it's an administrative group that discusses how this will actually impact us municipally and what can be possible. So we can take that information and have that discussion, not only amongst the public administrators, but also the solid waste handlers themselves, so we can make sure we're on the same page about expectations and the ability to produce those expectations through their, their means of collection and disposal.
All right, thank you for that explanation. And, and you're a voting member of the, of the TAC?
We are not a decision-making authority. We are just a, almost like a, think of an administrative group. So you might have a, a group of people who get together that are part of your city, you know, like a leadership team or the group of directors or the, what we used to have was an IT administrative meeting group, where you'll get together and flush out the ideas and then bring those ideas before actual voting members of a board, who will then take action on those recommendations.
So it's like a city manager advisory committee. It's, it's a non-Brown Act.
Correct.
Committee.
Yes.
Okay. In, in regards to the city's involvement, staff's involvement with this implementation of this ordinance, there isn't much in the way of staff involvement except for code compliance. Is that right?
That is correct. There'll be a few ancillary tasks, which will probably be mow or weighty in the beginning of this as we're rolling it out and making it public and doing the PR campaign and that sort of stuff. The TAC is also a great place to unify that sounding board that we get from the, the public. But over the long term, it's predominantly going to be a code enforcement task. But prior to getting to code enforcement, the solid waste handler, in our case, Green Waste Recovery, and the, the district and the county health will have a, a process before it ever comes to that. So for, to give an example, if there was a multifamily housing development that wanted to, you know, do something that required them to now provide the correct number of cans and types of cans, let's say they're going to do some kind of modification. And then the building department said, okay, now you need to do these things and put that stuff in. Okay, then they say they did it, but then they try to cancel their subscription. Well, Green Waste is going to tell them no. And then, you know, as we work through that, public administrator like myself might get involved, try to help explain to them why they need to maintain it. And then it would come before a coded administrator, who would then issue a citation for that, that action, of trying to not allow the service to be provided to their renters.
Do, do you know, thank you for that. And in regards to the added responsibilities for our code compliance officer, do you expect it'll be small?
It'll be, it'll be relatively small, in part because we've already done the collection of organics from businesses. That's, that's the big area where we would anticipate there would be pushback or confusion or people trying to nitpick the law and say, no, I interpret it this way, but that way. That's where we would expect most of the problems. You know, with single-family housing, it's pretty easy. The, you already have the can. Not to give too much away, but the infrastructure is already there. There isn't much else that would be required of the, the individual. The next place where we would receive issues is in the multifamily dwelling situation. And in with that, we have a really good working relationship with Green Waste, who does all of the public outreach and education to ensure that multifamily dwellings, so, you know, condos, complexes, anything that holds five or more single-family units, you know, those facilities need to provide or obtain a waiver. And the waiver would be the only other component where someone in my role would get involved, where let's say if we went and looked at the location and we said, you've got no landscaping, so you don't need the green waste cans. You have, you know, enough recycling and trash cans, but just barely, you know, you've got a parking issue that's developing because you have, need to have this many cans. To then add cans to your situation, it would be too difficult or wouldn't be fiscally possible, or, you know, that sort of thing. So then a waiver might be given out at that time, or approved at that time by a public administrator. But that process, by the time it gets to that public administrator, the franchise hauler, so in our case, Green Waste Recovery, would have already gone through a lot of the education, re-education and going there, you know, providing examples and trying to work with them and work with the logistics of the different types of equipment and bins that could service their facility. So a lot of that work would just have already been discovered, essentially. So all the information and discovery component, I think. So at that point, really, it would just become the public administrator's role to either approve or deny a waiver in that scenario. And that, that approval or denial is pretty well spelled out in the municipal code already. There's not really concern that we're going to have a lot of those, thinking across the entire peninsula. And based on my understanding from those in the solid waste industry who've already gone through this process before, you know, we're all, the, the status quo is what's going to happen moving forward. So if you don't have space for cans now, there's not going to be really anything we can do to say you need to make more space for cans in the future, except through a development permit. So then if they filed for a certain amount of increase or change on their property or their building or their structure, adding a gazebo, we would say, hey, wait a minute, before you add that gazebo, you need to have these cans in place. So then that would be something that would have to be administered and reviewed later. But we don't anticipate too many instances of that because those who have waivers are on pretty tight spots already, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, Mr. Schneider, the TAC, as I understand it, is comprised of staff from each member jurisdiction, each, you know, city like us, the three haulers in the district service area, and then Waste Management District staff. Is that correct?
Correct. And then there's a, there's, sorry if I may, there's one extra, there's one extra member from Salinas Valley Recycles. So that the side of, that isn't serviced by Monterey Regional Waste Management District directly, Salinas Valley Recycles, which covers the Salinas Valley area, they're also part of the TAC. So it's not really specific to just our jurisdiction. It's more of a group that has similar issues and needs a place to discuss those issues and, and use them as a sounding board. And in this particular case with this legislation coming down, we're really focused on SB thirteen eighty-three throughout this whole year.
Right, but it's primarily the agencies that are actually using the facilities. The, and you do report regularly to the board of the Waste Management District, is that correct?
That is correct. There are, there's staff in the Waste Management District who sit on the TAC, who then report back to the Waste Management Board.
Okay. Well, it would be nice at some point, and I'll, I'll do this probably offline, but to have the minutes freely available on the, on the district's website, et cetera, as well as the scheduling of the meetings. I do have one question for you. You know, there are currently yellow cans, and I think they've been there for quite some time, on Forest Avenue, just on the east side of Forest Avenue, just up from Central, just kind of in back of the property line of the museum. Will those remain and be available to the public to dispose their, their waste in?
Yes, our intent is to all, what I'll call them, yellow cans, which currently take food waste. We anticipate that those will remain where they are as they are for this time being. There could be some operating efficiencies in the future where they go away because we have a better solution, or there's a lack of need for them. But as I understand it right now, operationally, those are just going to remain.
That's great, because I, I do believe they're used. The people come, I know people come to the farmer's market, and as part of that, going to the farmer's market, they use those to dispose their, their waste. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Tendell, maybe, yeah, maybe we have a vote, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
Peduri?
Aye.
Tomlinson? Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now move to the former item HC, First Quarter Workers' Compensation Report. Audrey Cray, Management Analyst, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff and city, people of the public. My name is Audrey Cray, and I'm with the Admin Services Department. And I will give you a quick, quick overview of our first quarter workers' compensation report. We started out with a fund balance of about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. We had revenues and expenses that brought us, unfortunately, in the negative fund balance of ninety-four thousand. That is due to a large premium that we paid upfront in the first quarter. However, we anticipate that our revenues for the rest of the year will meet our budgeted amount. And so we expect that our anticipated fund balance at the end of twenty-one, twenty-two to be in the positive. We have our cumulative claims that are outstanding remain consistent at forty-six. Only three of those forty-six are actually new claims, and those, two of them were expected to be closed at the end of October. So that remains pretty consistent, which is good. The new claims in the first quarter seem high. They were at thirty-three. However, twenty-nine of those were exposure claims only. And so we report in terms of OSHA, we need to report any exposures. Nothing typically comes of them. They do not turn into COVID cases, so there's no lost time. And there are no claims costs associated with those. So those just get reported, and then they get closed typically a month or two in. One of the exciting things that we've been working on is we've worked with the Subcommittee of our Safety Committee on our safety incentive program. We actually rolled that out at the employee training in October. And we anticipate having a kickoff luncheon in December. Employees are really excited about this new program. We hope that it creates a culture of safety and mindfulness in regards to safety, so all employees can kind of get on board and get really excited about earning rewards in relation to safety items. We also are going to be implementing our employee action plan, emergency action plan. Kind of took a backseat in terms of certain things like our drills and whatnot because of COVID. But now we're trying to get that back up and running. We anticipate doing some training coming up in the beginning of the calendar year. We've also amped up our training. We have something scheduled in November for drivers' training. So we're really excited to get things in motion in regards to our safety program. And that concludes my workers' compensation report for the first quarter of twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to make a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Right, council discussion on the item. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Cray.
Thank you, Mayor, and um thank you, Ms. Cray, for your uh report. I, the reason why I pulled this is I was curious is. Does a COVID. Claim, does that include testing? So if there is an exposure and they go and get tested. Um, before we had um onsite, you know, testing capabilities of our own. Would that trigger a claim or is that handled a a different way?
It does not necessarily trigger a claim. It's still considered a um non-cost claim. Um, it is taken care of by workers comp in terms of those um testing that we do send out. But it doesn't actually trigger an actual claim. It's not a medical cost. Um, and so that remains as report only.
Great, thank you. And then a follow-up question, um, now that the city has implemented um a vaccination. Um, program. If if a non-vaccinated employee gets COVID. What does that look like since we, since we do have, you know, pretty much a a mandatory um vaccination program? If they've opted out and and they're doing the testing requirement, but they get COVID and they get COVID at work. I'm just curious what what that would look like.
So if they, if their exposure was um due to work-related, then that would then initiate an actual workers' comp claim. Um, so there's an investigation that is typically done to determine. You know, where did the exposure occur? Were you on vacation? You know, those kind of things occur with the Cedric. Cedric takes care of that. Um, and so then they determine, did this really occur at work? Or was this, you know, you received, you got COVID, you're at, you're unvaccinated, but you actually. Probably had the exposure outside of work. So there's something that does occur with that. Um, and that really still actually happens with our vaccinated employees as well. So if a vaccinated employee did get COVID, same process for them.
Okay, great. And then regarding employees who are vaccinated and who have potentially been exposed. Do they still have to uh take a ten-day quarantine or because they're vaccinated, they can return to work? Are we monitoring potentially exposed vaccinated people who are working around unvaccinated people? Like how, how are we monitoring that?
Correct, absolutely. So right now, our um COVID exposure control plan. We are in line with Cal OSHA and the CDC. So currently, if you are a vaccinated employee who has an exposure, uh, we still take at that, what Cal OSHA says is. As long as you're not showing any symptoms, then you can return to work and you do not need to quarantine. Obviously, we want to make sure that that person does additional things like wear a mask. Now it's going to be mandated, but prior to it being mandated, that's one of the things that we would like them to do. Um, if the minute that any employee vaccinated or unvaccinated is feeling any type of symptoms. Regardless of how severe they are, we want them to stay away from work, call their supervisor and contact their doctor. So we're still trying to implement safety protocols to make sure that even if you're vaccinated, that we. Maintain a safe workspace for the rest of our employees.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate having that information.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All right, well now, uh, without further council discussion, we'll move on to item twelve A. City of Pacific Grove Youth Commission. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and um Ms. Candell, if you could please share the presentation.
Yes, will do. And just for the record, this is now twelve B.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And the next slide, please. And so, um, before the council this evening is to discuss. Uh, the formation of the Pacific Grove Youth Commission. Um, and direct the city manager to return with a draft ordinance and resolution for council review. Um, the next slide. And so really, um, in the state of California, there is an attachment that was included uh in the agenda report. I mean, there's really like four to five pages of California cities that have uh youth commissions. And what they do, uh, just like any other board or commission, is they uh provide recommendations to the council. Uh, on issues that would be affecting the city's youth, um, or potentially something that they would like to see. Uh, to benefit the youth in our city. Uh, they work directly with recreation departments on attracting uh youth participation. Typically, the um director of um Parks and Recreation or the Recreation Department manager. Is the staff liaison for the um youth commission. And also, they um. Really encourage uh volunteers at city events. Um, and so typically, we find that a lot of the um commissioners that are serving on the youth commission. Um, wear this other hat of being um a volunteer. Next slide, please. And so what uh youth commissioners do, uh, they will learn the importance. Of being involved in local governance. Uh, they develop lifelong leadership skills. And something else that um is really a great benefit is they're exposed to um city jobs and public service. As a potential uh career path. And I know that, you know, when, when the high schoolers especially are looking into. Um, what they want to do for a career, you know, public service is um. Is becoming not a priority and really uh dwindling. So this is a good um exposure for them. The next slide. So the purpose of the youth commission would be to provide a voice to our youth. Empower our youth to engage with local government and provide the council with the recommendations to better serve our youth. And the next slide. Uh, ideas for the formation, it would be a seven-member body. All the members would be between thirteen and eighteen years of age. Uh, all the members would live in the City of Pacific Grove. Uh, they would meet once a month during the school year. Uh, youth commissions would break for summer. As uh people are busy or doing jobs, camping, traveling, et cetera. And they would be assigned a staff liaison. And the formation, like all of our other boards and commissions, would be done by way um of ordinance. Um, and so the next step is uh would be the draft ordinance and resolution. Uh, to return to council for review. Um, and then, of course, we can also provide other direction to staff if applicable. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other comments?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor, um, and thank you, Councilmember Mc- McAdams. Um, I, I think this is a a great idea and I would love to, um, you know, I love that it's a. Uh, brainstorming session and have an ordinance come back. Um, I, I definitely support it. I have a couple of questions. Instead of um doing ages, I was kind of thinking maybe grades. If the intent is like seventh through twelfth grade. Because, as you, you know, as you know, kids start school at different times. And so maybe a seventh grader is is twelve and not thirteen, or maybe a senior is even nineteen. And and I wouldn't want them to have to stop halfway through or something like that. So if it's meant to be grades, I would just make that adjustment. And then, um, my biggest question, though, is whether the school, like, how do other cities incorporate the school board? Into setting this up or working with us. But will we be working hand in hand with the school board? Do you, did you, did you touch on that and I missed it?
Sure, no, I didn't. And no, we wouldn't be necessarily working with the the school board of trustees um. Directly, however, um, at Pacific Grove High School, um, there is uh Ms. Ganoa. And she runs, uh, she does like the world history. She also does close up. Um, and they also have, um, at the high school and the middle school, they have their own student body. So this is a little different, though, because they're advising the city and not necessarily. Um, their principal or school administration. Um, but I definitely would see some coordinated efforts at some point, um, especially with doing the call for applications. Um, and getting the word out. But we wouldn't necessarily work with the board of trustees, per se.
I think what is along the lines of having um a a contact at this school, whether it be on the board or just a staff liaison. Because when you, um. While there may be a staff liaison on the city side, uh, in order to, you know, to help. That having somebody who's very used to being with children and managing children and sending home notes to the parents and. And these types of things would be very handy um as a, as an adult. So that was my other recommendation. But thank you. That that's it, Mayor.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember. McAdams, I think that's a great situation. Just to piggyback off of uh. Uh, Councilmember Thomas's thing, um, I think it's important that um you attempt to. Coordinate with the school district because I, you already mentioned that, you know, they have uh student councils, K through six. And uh, the middle school just uh last year became a California Distinguished Schools. So they have probably more things in regards to student involvement. Uh, I know at the high school level, they probably, and I don't know for this for sure, but they might have like a. Students engaged in public service uh program. I I'm just saying, um. I think it's important to coordinate with the school district because it might be duplicating some, some measures. I don't know. I work for Pacific Grove Infight's whole, so.
Councilmember Fedory.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Councilmember McAdams, for bringing this item. I too like the idea. Uh, this is a. Certainly, uh, the first step for any kind of like school, I mean, I would say any child to. Understand how the inner workings of the city government works. I'm I'm all for it. Uh, my question, I, uh, in addition to what Councilmember Thomas and Emilio said. Uh, I I would like to expand the age group. Uh, for example, the City of Fairfield, which was provided in the presentation. The age group there for the youth commission there was between twelve and twenty-one. And really, youth does these days, I mean. Um, it's a hard thing to classify where the youth age starts or ends. So I I would certainly look to expanding it to making twelve or twenty-one or twelve, whatever be the case. I I just want a. A more, a bigger expansion of that age group so we can uh give all young adults really a chance to see what is happening. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I I like the idea of engaging young uh people with city government. I I think it's tremendous. Uh, when I was a kid going through the PG school system, uh, we had to come down as part of our civics class. And actually, at the podium, address city council. Uh, and I got vivid memories of that. Uh, and that, and that's, that, that kind, you know, you just remember those things and. Uh, it's a, it's an important exposure. It's an important thing to realize, you know, your responsibilities as a citizen. Um, I do have a few uh suggestions, however. I I don't want to see this become the city's responsibility to organize and maintain. Uh, I would love to participate in it. I'd I'd put my hand up right away to volunteer. But I think this is something we approach the school board on to see if they integrate a program. Because really, uh, the way I viewed and I read it, uh, studied it, I see this as an educational program. And although I want to foster and support education like this any way I can, it's not our responsibility. Uh, in city government to actually maintain and organize it. Instead, we should be networking. We should be collaborating with the school district. Uh, to to develop a plan uh that allows them, their, the students to directly uh interact with. Uh, with the council. And um, if we could get to that, I I think it would be great, but I. I I don't know if the, uh, doing an ordinance to form a a a a city uh commission. Is is the right approach here. Instead, I think we should be uh collaborating with the school district. Those are my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Priest.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm I'm with uh Councilmember Coletti on this issue. I think that, uh. Just I have a list of things that came into my head when I saw this and when I read it, um, before the meeting. One is that there are a lot of really excellent um nonprofit groups that that engage in this kind of work. Um, and they're, they're have, they're fully functional. They're, they have full infrastructure. Um, to commit, to create something um in our, in our small city. And I also noticed that in in the list of cities, they were much larger than ours, and I didn't see any local ones. Um, without the buy-in of the school district, I I just can't support that with, uh, for a lot of the reasons that uh Councilmember Cluddy mentioned as well. Um, I think there are mentorship programs out there. I think we should a hundred percent uh work with the school district if they want to bring forward a program like that. Um, ultimately, the students are underneath their purview when they're during the school day or, you know, at at certain points. And I don't think the city wants to have responsibility for that. The other issue, I heard, you know, let's bring all the young adults, but then you have adults with children and that's another issue. That's a security potentially issue or. You know, just parents may not want their kids with adults. So I I think I just see a lot of issues there. Um, and so I, to me, it needs a lot more thought and. Uh, without any buy-in from the school district, I just, I don't think we can do it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
I'll add in that I also thank uh Councilmember McAdams for thinking out of the box. And uh bringing this forward to us. Um, this is an intriguing idea. I have a couple of alternatives to throw in, throw in the mix. Some, I'm a little concerned. About creating a brand-new commission and exactly what it would, uh. Um, what its area responsibilities would be. And yes, I'll, in full honesty, I'm a little concerned about the extra um uh staff. But uh, here's some alternatives to think about. How about uh standing youth committees for recreation, library and museum boards? So you have those three boards have a a member. And then, uh, that's the subcommittee, a youth subcommittee and recruits. Uh, some youth um to be on that subcommittee that. Anyhow, that's an alternative. And the second alternative is a little bit more out of the box. It's a lower the age for committee members. Period. Do planning commissioners really need to be twenty-one years old? I I'm just, I'm joking, but um, but you get my, get my drift. For the recreation board, well, the three, the three boards that I suggested named. Um, and maybe the traffic safety, but the. The rec, library, museum board seem to come to mind that, um, maybe we could have some younger members on them. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I I really appreciate that, that comment and that thought. I know for me, um, really, my goal here is to engage our youth and have that voice. At the table, um. You know, to, we have, especially, you know, the recreation board, I'd like to use as an example. You know, I often wonder, like, how often do we ask what the kids want? You know, um, how often do we say, hey, we're thinking about investing in this park? What do you think of that? And they'll go, oh, no, we play at our net park all the time. What do you think of that? And they'll go, oh no, we play at our net park all the time and. You know, it's a mess or whatever. And so I think we're really missing. Um, this critical voice, um, in our decision-making when it comes to our recreation programming. Um, and, but I also like the, um, you know, to engage with the library. Um, and I, and I think the museum is a good idea too, so, um. I appreciate the discussion. I definitely would like to, um, have a, a youth commissioner. Um, I think that that would be the sort of streamlined, uh, way to go. It's not too much of a. Commitment or trying to organize, you know, a, a lot of kids. Um, but I, I think it would be worth trying, um, and maybe if we just start with one, uh. And board that could, uh, uh, it could be interesting and probably get some parents involved too.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
So I, I really like that idea as well. Uh, you know, I, I do think it's worthwhile to engage with. The school because if the offering of saying, hey, we could have a full-on youth commission if you guys really want this. If this is going to enhance our local schools and the offering that they're giving to the children, I want to be supportive of that. Um, and get them involved, but if maybe it's not a good time, maybe they're, you know, they are climbing out of a bit of a difficult time, right? At the school, so if it's not something that timing is married up on. Um, then what can we do without taking on the full burden of, of setting up the program? Um, you know, I, maybe this is what you were saying, Mayor, but I kind of read it as. Rather than lower the age of the boards and commission members. Add a spot to every board and commission that is for a youth. Not every, but the three that you mentioned, that is particularly for, uh, a youth. In our community, so that would be under the age of, of eighteen or, or twelve, or whatever the age you want to agree upon, but. Um, and that'd be a pretty coveted spot, I would bet to, to have, um, to get on. I mean, put that on a resume and get that experience and, and it would be really fun to, uh. To have our boards and commission members be mentors to that, to that child too in our community and get them involved. So I think that's a great idea.
Councilmember Kaduri.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I, I too like after hearing everyone's comments, uh. Uh, especially the out-of-the-box comments, uh, it's kind of like. Perhaps, uh, a better suggestion would be to have staff, uh. Find out, research some more to find out what the options are for us. And really find out if the school district is, uh, open to suggestions or not. Um, I, I, I like the, uh, idea of, uh. Standing committee, uh, that advises the recreation kind of department, et cetera. But I think the original intent of Councilmember McAdams was to give this youth commission, um. Kind of like not box them into just recreation, just, uh, just one particular item, but really look into all aspects of the city. So, I mean, I'm, I'm grappling with multiple options here, so maybe, uh, uh, a suggestion would be to have staff, uh, come up with some recommendations. And that could include like staff time being spent on these recommendations if the school board does not want to participate. Uh, that will help us all in making a, a, you know, an informed decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Claddy.
Yeah, I'd support, uh, Councilmember Kaduri's suggestion. I, the idea of how, I, I like the idea, uh, of having. The pro, you know, is of having one person, uh, kind of as a, a youth representative on these three different. Uh, boards, committees and commissions, but that, that's only for one person. I'd like to see a lot more people get engaged. So, well, three people, yes, one for each of the board. You're correct. You're correct. But if they had, e- e- assuming that everyone, uh, had interest in the library, for instance, you don't, you'd only have one get that spot, so. Uh, I, I'd like to see something that involves as many people as, as, as possible. In fact, everyone who wants to participate, so. Um. I don't know, just maybe need a little more thought and time to come to something, but I think the, the, the ones to approach to get. Better feedback on this would be the school board and not necessarily staff.
I'll just, uh, toss in that we've kind of danced around, uh, the topic of how many, um. How many of our youth would want to be on these, uh, commissions or boards or what have you? And, uh, I think I've, I, I'm just not sure, uh. And that might be something to ask the, um, the school district. Whether that's, you know, the superintendent Ralph Faraas or the, the school district board. If we're going to get a lot of applicants, I think that should influence what we do. If we're going to get few applicants, then that tells us something else, so. Just a thought. Councilmember McAdams. You've gotten feedback on this. I'm not sensing we're coalescing around, you know. But I could be wrong. Do you want to make a motion, your original, uh, recommendation? Or do you want to take this input away and come back? But what, how would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for all of the comments. I, I, um, took some notes down and, uh. Perhaps I could, um, wo- work with the, uh, recreation department. Uh, director and the city manager have a, a quick meeting and, uh, and touch base with. Uh, the school. I, I do know a couple of the trustees and I also know, um, Ms. Gano who runs the. Uh, civics part, uh, at the, at the high school, so. Um, perhaps I could do, uh, some research and some digging and, and try to gauge. The interest from the students and return to council.
Uh, that, that sounds excellent. Um, to me, any other council comments? Then we'll. Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you. Um, uh. Councilmember McAdams, the other suggestion I would have with the school district is, uh, Barbara Martinez. I think she takes care of the, uh, security plus, um, alternative education. Um, you know, she's right next to the monarch butterfly, sir.
Thank you.
Right, um, it's now after eight o'clock. Do I have a motion to take a brief recess?
Move to approve to take a ten-minute.
All right.
Break, sorry.
Any, uh, uh, saying no objections, let's, uh, return at eight thirty. Okay, let's resume. Uh, the next item is twelve C coastal wildlife, uh, protection. This is, uh. My item and I'm going to introduce Amanda Priest, who will give you a brief, uh, presentation. She was a member of the Coastal Wildlife Protection Advisory Committee. This is a. A, uh, committee of, uh, local marine scientists and wildlife advocates. Who, uh, worked many meetings over the course of what turned out to be almost two years. And, um. Um, and her, uh, her contributions to that, uh, committee are immense. She, uh, has spent many years on habitat restoration at Asilomar State Beach and Conference Grounds. Amanda has studied coastal wildlife habitat and upland forests of Pacific Grove in her graduate studies. And she is, uh, currently the environmental advocate for the Monterey Audubon Society. Welcome, Amanda.
Hi, Mayor Peak. Thanks for that introduction. Thanks, everybody, for powering through. I've been, I've been zooming all day long as well, so I'll try to. Try to keep the energy up. Let's see if I can share my screen here. All right. All right, so hopefully you're just seeing the slides and not my notes. All right, so yeah, thanks so much for that introduction. Um, move you guys around a bit up here. Yeah, the formation of the, the Coastal Wildlife Protection Advisory Committee certainly aligns with the council's goals of. Environmental stewardship and to adopt and develop policies and ordinances that preserve and protect the environment. So it's very gratifying to collaborate with this group of scientists and to contribute to this knowledge base of our coastal wildlife. Um, as a side note, we were formed, you know, pre-COVID. Um, and summer twenty twenty was actually one of the busiest summers I've ever experienced out on the coast at Asilomar State Beach. So it was really wonderful that people are, you know, discovering. How much their mental health and well-being, you know, is really linked up with nature, but it also really brought to the forefront that we need to have a good. A good plan in place for managing our coastline because it was just crawling, crawling with people. Um, we need to ensure the coastline and it's, you know, wildlife persistent to the future for all of those. You know, cool kids who want to be on, on the commissions and everything. So, uh, the goal of our committee, it was convened to create a guiding document that was scientifically sound. And included our collective wisdom to support the protection of Pacific Grove's coastal wildlife. Um, in geographic scope, which is kind of important to note, we were looking at the coastal bluffs and the recreation trail. Sandy and rocky beaches, rocky outcrops and the intertidal zone. And, um, all of these habitats and, you know, the offshore habitat and the upland habitat, they're all very much, you know, interconnected. We recognize that. Um, but, you know, the offshore and the upland habitat weren't really part of the scope of our committee. Just because we really had to try to, you know, restrict our field of view to try to create something. It would get a little unwieldy if we just did. All of Pacific Grove. Um, so it was hard to define our boundaries. We do recognize that they're all very much interconnected. And so, yeah, wildlife, coastal wildlife, that's a big reason most of us live here and the reason people choose to come visit us here. Um, and it's not just that committee members, you know, think that wildlife are cool. Of course, we do think that, but. They also have, you know, intrinsic value to most of our residents here in PG. Wildlife also provide innumerable ecosystem services that we benefit from and that essentially keep our, our world functioning. Um, and also, as I mentioned, they're a huge draw for tourism. You know, even if people don't explicitly say. They're coming to PG to see a seal, you know, that's a big part of the experience, you know, viewing this healthy, beautiful. You know, view shed and ecosystem with lots of amazing species and creatures interacting. So we're lucky that we get to, you know, see and engage with this wildlife, you know, regularly in our backyards. But global biodiversity is really, you know, just tanking at an unprecedented rate across the world. Reasons for the decline include land use change, pollution, over-exploitation of certain species. Introduction of invasive species and novel diseases. And of course, you know, the big one, uh, climate change. So we are seeing the effects of climate change regularly now, um, between wildfires and sea level rise. So we need to really ensure that our local wildlife populations are, are robust and healthy so that they can adapt to these changes that are coming at them so quickly. So to ensure that we have robust populations, we need to increase, you know, the protections on our little stretch of the world through proactive management. There's no reason to wait for a species to be listed before taking action on their behalf. And we're really in a unique place to be doing this. Um, Pacific Grove is the only city in all of California that's completely surrounded by marine protected areas. And whether you're not, whether or not you think that's a blessing or a burden, you know, is up to you, but that is the fact. And so. Um, there is state and federal protections, you know, for this habitat and for the wildlife here. But the city can take, you know, some additional actions to help, um, enhance the protections. And so our, our recommendations document, it's fifty-seven pages long, but don't let that deter you. There's some dense appendices and some pictures. Some pictures and maps that are, you know, take up some space. Um, but I'm just going to give you the, the salient points here. Um, you know, of the recommendations for you to keep in mind as you, you know, develop ideas and form opinions about different projects around the city. So it is available to download in this agenda packet, um, and hopefully you can all find that easily because you are here at this meeting tonight. Um, so I hope you do read through the full document, but I'm going to be focusing on the main recommendations that we had right up front in that document. So these are kind of the large-scale habitat management recommendations and. While I had seven on the list in the document, I think I can actually scrunch them down to five main ideas. So the first big one is that we need to better manage access to our rocky outcrops and sensitive wildlife breeding areas. This, of course, is Hopkins Marine Station, a super popular spot, and it's this wonderful, like, happy accident. It's a win-win both for the wildlife and for people. You know, the harbor seals get this really protected place, no access year-round. To, you know, come on land and give birth and rest after an injury or a stressful day at a stormy sea. And then the people always know exactly where to go to see a harbor seal. If there was, you know, free access on this beach, there wouldn't be a group of harbor seals hanging out there all day. They would have dispersed from, you know, the first dog running down the beach in the morning. And then people would be searching all over for a harbor seal. Um, as it stands, you know, this spot is so perfect. People know just where to go. Um, the harvests are protected. It's one of the best kind of situations we could have on the coast. And so, you know, that reoccurring human disturbance really is a huge problem for marine wildlife because they're trying to rest, recover, you know, raise a family basically. And we can decrease human disturbance by, you know, reducing or limiting access to specific rocky outcrops or sensitive wildlife areas. Year-round or seasonally. You can have these temporary closures, like the ropes that will put up for the oyster catchers, sandwich boards or temporary fencing. The oyster catchers, of course, are nice and tricky. They don't nest in the same spot every year, so you couldn't really have like a permanently closed place. Because they could just go outside of it the next summer. So we kind of need to be on our toes and be actively managing these habitats. A second recommendation is to remove problematic non-native species. And problematic is just a nice way of basically saying these plants are basically a dead end, an ecological dead end for our local wildlife. Um, these species really tend to dominate the landscape at the expense of biodiversity and biodiversity is key in almost every system. Um, you know, the cap, the committee, we did agree that, you know, the Drosanthemum, the magic carpet there at Perkins Park is historic, you know, it should stay. Should stay in that footprint, though. Does, we don't need a whole coastline of magic carpet. Um, you know, because as I mentioned, these plants, the, both the Drosanthemum and this Carpobrotus, the larger ice plant. They're kind of not helpful for our wildlife. You know, alternatively. You can plant native plants to support wildlife. That's basically what's happening out of Point Pinos now, and I'm so excited to see it. You know, the ice plant, both the, the magic carpet and the carpobrotus doesn't have any vertical structure. And so a lot of these native plants, like the yellow bush lupin that this little white-crowned sparrow is sitting on, that provides a place not just, you know, to perch upon. Um, there's bugs and pollinators that will be feeding on the nectar from the flowers. And then these white-crowned sparrows who breed locally, they nest up under those bushes. And so just lots of diversity of structures also critical in this habitat. Um, uh, the new coast trail, like I said, is a place that, you know, is kind of doing two jobs, which is really super. It's providing food and shelter for wildlife, the new native plants that are going to be coming up. But then it's also creating, uh, a buffer zone basically between the rising ocean waves and people and the infrastructure and our cars. So that leads us to this next recommendation, which is to avoid seawalls and riprap. Ripraps basically any like big rocks or cement chunks that get pasted on the side of bluffs to try to keep it in place essentially. Um, this is a picture of Asilomar and you can see that the riprap did not stay up on the bluff. Uh, these were probably installed in the early two thousands. And subsequent winter storms have been just pulling them down. So it just really demonstrates that, you know, coastal armoring, which is. But seawalls and riprap are collectively called, is really just kind of a Band-Aid on a much bigger problem. And, uh, you know, there's a high likelihood that we're going to be experiencing one to three feet of sea level rise by twenty-one hundred. And I've definitely, you know, planted plants out of Asilomar on bluffs that has subsequently been washed away in the, you know, following seven years, so. It's happening now and it's, um, sobering to have to look out at the ocean and think that that's what you're up against because. Um, you know, like the riprap seawalls also don't really protect a beach. Um, they just ensure that it goes away actually because you just have this solid wall. And then the waves lapping at the base, almost like a bathtub or a swimming pool. All that intertidal habitat, all that diversity in that zone, even a sandy beach you would sunbathe on. That essentially all just goes underwater as the sea level rises. And then again, you're, you know, the sea levels aren't going to stop rising, so the, the wall is just going to get undermined or washed over and then you have to pay to keep fixing it. So seawalls are also not recommended. That's another coastal armoring thing. Um, not, not recommended. It's not gonna, it's not gonna keep back the ocean. That's a big, strong energetic force. You just can't, can't fight that one. Um, the recommendation to use soft engineering approaches such as beach nourishment and dune restoration. Um, that's useful when appropriate, but a lot of Pacific Grove, most of Pacific Grove is rocky intertidal habitat. Um, the Point Pino section with the vegetation that's going in and moving, you know, the. The Point Pino section with the vegetation that's going in and moving, you know, the parking back, that's basically dune restoration or bluff restoration to help create that buffer zone. So that's a really great step in the right direction. But when you can't do that, the next recommendation or the next best thing is to move infrastructure inland, which everybody, you know, hates even the thought of it because we know that's going to be super costly. This is, again, those parking spots out of Silomar, the ripraps down on the beach here. And these cars up here are just, you know, and this year it's even worse. There's these huge canyons forming where these cars are parked. And so, you know, state parks needs to decide, you know, are we just going to give up those spots? Are we going to put in all the work to move all that riprap back up? You know, most state parks, coastal commission, all those guys, they're very anti-coastal armoring. But as staff noted in the comments, you know, underground utilities near the coast, particularly sewer lines, require containment. And to preempt any wastewater spills or road collapses due to undermined or derelict seawalls, that, you know, infrastructure needs to be moved inland essentially. And there is a lot of support from the state for these sort of public infrastructure projects that enhance conservation of the environment and help with relocating infrastructure. That's something worth looking into that grants have been, have been offered for those sort of actions. And this spot is, this is a historical picture now. This isn't how Point Pinos looks anymore. But it was basically another demonstration that, you know, what was once the intertidal habitat is going to be subtitle, what now, you know, is a parking lot is going to be the intertidal. Everything just needs to shift landward essentially as these seas rise because we need to make room for these intertidal species to slowly migrate inland. They're really, you know, they in themselves are super important. I shouldn't be dismissive of the mosses and limpets, but they're also really critical food resources for a lot of the migrating shorebirds. And the long-term plan, you know, that I had read about in the Point Pino coastal trail project to essentially, you know, retire Sunset Avenue and Ocean View as the sea levels rise. That's a really excellent example of looking ahead and planning ahead. Another recommendation is to support existing coastal interpretive programs and community science programs and also implement additional programs that foster awareness of wildlife issues on our coastline. As staff noted again in the agenda, volunteers require supervision and structure, but funding could potentially be found to support our current volunteer coordinator and then to maybe expand that program as well. But there are some really great organizations already operating. The Black Oyster Catcher Monitoring Projects, part of Montreux Audubon Society. Baynet and Team Ocean are out there all the time. They're part of the National Marine Sanctuary Foundation. And then there's also folks just doing data gathering. Sea otter savvy are watching how otters are reacting to people and disturbance. The PG Museum's limpet program goes out and surveys in the intertidal habitat a lot. So all these organizations, you know, we really should be listening to them when they come to us and say, there's a problem. I've been seeing this thing. They're spending so much time out on the coastline. Thousands of hours are being logged by these, these teams of people. So they really have a good idea of what, you know, what's wrong with one species, one problem area. They have some good data for us to utilize. And the last big recommendation is to create a conservation officer or conservation ambassador, if you like, position. This would be a permanent city position that would be dedicated to the protection of wildlife through education and outreach and with the ability to issue citations. They'd be engaging with the public on the coastline by foot or by bike, especially on weekends and holidays. They would also be the point person that would help really shepherd all of these recommendations and any of the other wildlife and coastal protection actions that have been, you know, supported in prior documentation, you know, shepherding that through city council and planning processes. In addition to this, creating a dedicated permanent wildlife commission, another commission, I'm sorry, to assist with planning, promoting, executing and monitoring the progress of the city's strategies for preserving our coastal wildlife and their habitats. This commission would be able to dedicate time to apply for grants or, you know, get really creative and find other, you know, sources of funding that would help fund this conservation officer position. And then also perhaps expand the city's volunteer program. And so these next points aren't related to recommendations. They're just more factual. This is all about human disturbance and, you know, it's just a catch-all phrase for all these little things we're going to talk about quickly that are kind of those seemingly, you know, low-impact things that we see regularly when you're out on the coastline. And most of these issues actually have, you know, laws or ordinances in place related to them, but then, like, you know, enforcement and education is somewhat lacking. So the first element of human disturbance we're talking about is feeding wildlife. And this one's always tough because a lot of people think they're helping wildlife. You know, I'm going to give this guy a leg up. I'm going to give this ground squirrel a peanut. He looks like he's struggling. Even though they're all like the size of guinea pigs out there at Lover's Point. It's really usually detrimental to wildlife to be fed human food. And then there's this whole thing where the populations get wildly out of whack. You know, these urban adaptive species that like people and eat human food, their populations grow and grow and grow. And some of these species are actually predators on these more sensitive species that don't eat human food and don't like human disturbance who are already at such a disadvantage on our coastline. So feeding wildlife is a big problem. A nice quick fix for this one would be, you know, getting wildlife-proof trash cans and recycle bins along our coastline. Again, there are rules in place already about feeding wildlife, but enforcement and education is always important. Operating UAVs and drones on the coastline is still a problem. We've definitely made tons of progress with this, with the ordinance that's in place requiring a permit to operate these. But enforcement and education is still an issue. And that is a reoccurring theme with these human disturbance problems that I talk about. But drones are definitely perceived as a giant alien predator, you know, swooping down to eat you and your babies. So they cause stampeding at the harbor seal colony. Oyster catchers go swooping up to try to fight them. So they're definitely still a problem and harass wildlife repetitively. Domestic pets are another way that humans disturb wildlife. Nearly all the shorebirds we're seeing out on the coast right now are migratory species. The only guy who sticks around is the black oyster catcher. So all these other crazy nuts with the long crazy beaks or short beaks and they're running up and down the beach. They're all either going somewhere or they've flown here from Alaska and they're just trying to refuel and keep going. So, you know, these little twenty-gram species that fly from Alaska to Tierra del Fuego are out here just trying to get a leg up and keep going. And then when your dog, who, you know, I love dogs, I want them to be happy and to play, but chasing those birds up over and over again from the beach where they're foraging is just painful to witness because you know, most of these species, most of these wild animals are just existing on that razor-thin edge of, you know, falling dead in the ocean at any moment or, you know, living to make it to their wintering grounds. So leash laws, of course, exist, but enforcement is important. Education about where you can have your dogs off-leash is important. And not just on city property, but also at state parks. This is a reoccurring issue. Noise is a problem. Our coastal wildlife, oh, they are sensitive and they do not like the noise. And that's, you know, that's why they're sensitive coastal wildlife species. They can't, they don't like it. Especially these loud salute rounds that are in our fireworks displays. Any loud demolition or construction work on the coastline, you know, when permits are issued, these really need to be kind of kept in mind, noise levels and stuff. But a useful part about this is there is an element of seasonality to this. You know, March through August is generally when most of our coastal wildlife is at that, like, peak level of stress. They have babies, they're protecting a territory. They're already maxed out. So summer is when it's the worst time to have these impacts to our coastal wildlife. Another element of human disturbance is poaching and extraction. And again, there's laws, there's laws in place, you know, which is really tricky. A dedicated conservation officer could perhaps focus on this and be there at low tides on holiday weekends to really, you know, educate people. Most folks honestly don't know that there's rules and that it's dangerous and hazardous to be picking up this starfish and putting him in a bag. It's not going to live, you know, and maybe they just don't even know it's an animal in some cases. But a conservation officer could really focus on education, but also coordinate with all the local law enforcement branches, NOAA and Fish and Wildlife, to really get some more action for when there's these egregious poaching incidences on the coast. So stepping away from human disturbance, we're just looking at some nice pictures here. These are some of our more sensitive species. We've got our harbor seals, which of course are marine mammal that have special protections through the Marine Mammal Protection Act. Our two plants here are federally endangered plant species you find out on the coast that, you know, are small and tiny and easy to miss and don't flower most of the year. So again, kind of subtle little beauties out there in the dunes. And then, of course, our black oyster catcher, which is ranked as a species of special concern by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, just based on their, you know, very specialized lifestyle living on the rocky intertidal habitats in California on the West Coast. And also, there's just not a lot known about them still. They're not well-studied. So instead of getting listed as the threatened species, they're just a species of concern because kind of don't have enough data on them. And then the big one, what's kind of contradictory in our document is that the thing that's the biggest threat to our coastal wildlife kind of has the smallest portion of, you know, smallest section in our document, unfortunately. Not unfortunately, you know, it's, it's so big that it's, you know, kind of the impetus or the, you know, the, the driver of a lot of the other problems, actually. And, you know, it's, let's see, it's, it's related to all the other problems that we do address in the document. And the actions that reduce carbon emissions, they're kind of adjacent to direct wildlife protection. But of course, it is all important and interrelated. Climate change is the biggest threat. You know, the frequency, intensity and duration of heat waves, both in the air but out in the ocean are all expected to increase. You know, we had that huge just population-crushing heat wave in 2015, that warm water blob. I mean, there were dead seabirds all over the place. The California sea lions were just dropping left and right. So those are going to be happening more regularly. So that's more of that, you know, wildlife protections that create a robust population will be really critical because they need to have that, that wiggle room to kind of adapt when this stuff happens. Addressing climate change does feel overwhelming and it's like, it's really draining to even be addressing a lot of these things or learning about them. But we do need to work, continue to work hard, right here at the local level and really consider all projects within the context of this new reality. Essentially that, you know, reducing our carbon footprint is the primary thing, reducing our carbon emissions. So, you know, thoughtful planning within the built-up areas in Pacific Grove, such as increasing urban green spaces. You know, that'll simultaneously reduce emissions, sequester carbon, and then create wildlife habitats. That's one of those nice, another win-win situation that we need to be working towards and striving to implement. Also, within the document, we have these six areas of special interest that were identified by basically all of us from our different organizations compiling our data using GIS, which I do recommend. ArcGIS is a super fun tool to use and very good for visualizing data because we were able to create these areas of interest where a lot of different wildlife observations or important wildlife habitat would overlap. And so while, of course, we'd love to implement all of these recommendations along the whole coastline, these areas would kind of give you the most bang for your buck, probably. The maps are in the document and if you focus on these six areas, you probably benefit, you know, the most wildlife on the coastline. As a note, our committee was, you know, simply looking at what should be done based on current science. Not exactly how to do these things, which has a lot trickier, I've realized. But I am available to answer any additional questions from the subcommittee that's potentially going to be formed to help them understand the details of the recommendations. I would be happy to give this presentation again or to host workshops with the city staff, specifically with like public works or law enforcement who have to deal with these topics, you know, daily, basically. I just want to help explain these, explain the reasoning behind these recommendations so that it's clear and everyone has buy-in. And of course, funding will always be a problem, but perhaps with a permanent wildlife commission, creative sources of funding, you know, such as the Coastal Conservancy Whale Tail Grants can be found to fund a position such as the conservation officer or to expand the volunteer program. So, you know, thank you so much for listening to me ramble and talk about wildlife. Thank you so much for what you do and for staying up. You know, what you do matters and I appreciate you. So I'll take any questions and feel free to email if you have any random wildlife question that occurs to you.
Well, thank you very much, Amanda. Perfect. And I have a presentation myself. It's just a couple of slides. Oops, let me.
Are you going to share?
Yeah, I want to share. I guess, do you have to give me permission?
No, uh-uh. You should be able to share. There's a little.
I've done this before.
It was just there, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm sorry. It's just. So, oh, first off, it was a committee of twelve people. As I mentioned, Amanda was on it. I want to give a shout out to two other members of the Coastal Wildlife Protection Advisory Committee that are on the meeting today, Bill Stanley and Tom Aikman. So shout out to those folks also. And so this is a, this is a pretty big subject and some some really needs to go into how the city of Pacific Grove might play a role in this. Obviously, there are things that issues well beyond the, the city's ability to adequately address. But there are things that we can do in our backyard and the CW PAC report's available. And within it, those recommendations, you just heard a review of that. The BNRC recently reviewed that and, and provided another set of recommendations. And that's in the agenda packet as well as staff comments. And so considering the scope of this subject, I'm suggesting that we create a subcommittee just to review this information and, you know, perhaps talk to some, talk to some folks and come back in January with some, some of their thoughts. I think the, the heavy lifting so far has been done by the CW PAC and, and the committees now would be charged with reviewing this and adding their wisdom as to what the city can do. So that concludes my presentation. We'll go out to public comment.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, the time has come for the city to establish and fund a dedicated conservation officer as a permanent city employee and create a commission to support that. We are losing our natural resources at an alarming rate, some even by public works action. There seem to be mainly concerned citizens enforcing and protecting, maintaining and advocating for restoration and protection. We need the city's concerted priority efforts and support for help. Really need this now if we are to have this for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Aikman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi. First, I want to thank Amanda who did a great presentation. So thank you, Amanda, for that. And, you know, you had the best group of people working on this, so they were your consultants. So I would hope that the city would move forward with this. This is long overdue and those of us out there that have been working to preserve wildlife desperately need help. And the city needs to step up and protect its resources. And I think both of these are good plans. I would love to see the wildlife officer. We need, you know, more than anything, we need enforcement of the laws we already have and the ordinances. The city does a great job every year of protecting the harbor seals over at Fifth Street with the fence going up. I'd like to see, you know, some other protections for some of the other wildlife and certainly our coastline, which is the reason people come here to this area. So thumbs up on this. Great job for the committee. Thank you, Mayor, for putting this together. And let's do this. It's, again, it's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, please, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. That was such a fabulous presentation. I just want to say.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. That was such a fabulous presentation. I just want to say, my niece is an environmentalist who teaches as a professor and gosh, I wish she could have heard this. And I salute you're putting this together and the council looking at this. If there's anything that I can do as a citizen or if we can make that more known, how we can help in this effort, that's so important. And I applaud your saying out loud that we do need an environmental officer. I totally think that's a great idea and I will look forward and follow this and be, um, hopefully, uh, applauding when we get the environmental officer when this comes back in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Um, please support the coastal wildlife protection, uh, report and its recommendations and the BNRC's priority recommendations from throughout the report. And please approve the mayor's recommendation to form a council subcommittee to return to council. Um, uh, uh, in January with recommendations for how to proceed. The mayor's vision in creating the coastal wildlife protection committee stemmed, stemmed from council's November in two thousand eighteen approval of a local coastal program. With certification of an LCP anticipated at that time, the city needed to develop its own understanding of how to protect habitat for the extraordinary diversity of coastal wildlife we have in PG. We're so fortunate that distinguished local scientists, natural resource managers and naturalists accepted the mayor's invitation to be on an advisory committee. They're acutely aware of the threats to wildlife and generously volunteer their time to develop their report, identifying the threats and mitigations that are needed. The NRC's number one recommendation is to form a wildlife commission and hire a wildlife officer. I hope a council subcommittee will support a focused coastal wildlife commission as an affordable first step to start planning and implementing the recommendations throughout the report. A coastal wildlife commission could look at strategies to work toward getting a wildlife officer as well. Staff comments attached to the agenda report present a kind of negative picture of the possibilities and suggest that the CDP is a daunting task when in fact the city has its own LCP now and our community wildlife monitoring projects and organizations have the knowledge base, the data and the capability of preparing authoritative and well substantiated CDP applications and exploring and analyzing protection options. It may seem that the wildlife protection work is in beautification and natural resources commissions realm and doesn't require an additional commission. However, BNRC is already tasked with a wide array of responsibilities. Four BNRC subcommittees are currently addressing active projects related to trees and landscaping, particularly in George Washington Park, the Monarch Sanctuary, recycling and litter reduction and public art. They have five more subcommittees researching issues until the time when they can, uh, address them. I hope you will approve a set council subcommittee to return to council with suggestions for how to start implementing the coastal wildlife protection actions needed to overcome the threats to our extraordinary coastline caused by human impacts and climate change. A coastwa- coastal wildlife commission would be an excellent first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, just a couple of hands went up. Do you, do you want to continue?
Please.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for, um, inspiring this and making it happen. Uh, I've observed for the last fifty years up and down the California coast, well, in other parts of the United States, the establishment of, uh, first committees and then commissions and then organizations to carry out wildlife protection. The first one I think of is Santa Monica Mountains. Yes, it's Santa Monica Mountains. But the Santa Monica Mountain, uh, reserve and conservancy there is now a national, uh, monument. And it started off small, the Penasquitas Lagoon, the Tijuana Estuary. All of those have become, uh, national, uh, landmarks. And the up and down the coast of California, these all started off as committees and ideas. Some, in some cases, just people, uh, watching birds and, and noticing the wildlife and then uh, developing little reports. And that's what this is. Please don't let it go. This is an important step. Uh, it's a threshold for doing something that, uh, will make the public works department a lot happier, uh, make the community a lot happier and the visitors who come here a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carmelita, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, a very good report and thank you, um, for taking the time to produce it. I'm here to advocate for the deer. Um, they are part of our wildlife. Our tourists enjoy them immensely and, uh, they remain at risk. Currently in the municipal code, there are ten sections spread out in the code that speak to wildlife. Discusses the do's and don'ts, uh, talks about the Monarch Sanctuary, speaks to deer and harbor seals and what have you. Uh, during my research of the municipal code, what I found and I'm disappointed in is that the section twelve dot sixteen dot two five oh, which spoke specifically to the Monarch Sanctuary about everything, all in one place, was repealed. And all of that information has now been spread out through the municipal code, which makes it very difficult if you want to find anything out specifically to the Monarch Sanctuary, you have to do a lot of research. So I'm here to suggest and encourage you, Mayor Peak and the city council to think real hard about developing a wildlife protection ordinance and incorporate all of this information into one section of the municipal code so that when people have questions about our wildlife, all of it, all of it, they go to this one section and they can find it. They can find information about the harbor seals, the deer, uh, the birds and whatever else one might want to include. I support definitely the conservation officer idea, uh, because it, it will be very critical to have an individual who specializes and has the expertise, um, to care for this product that is going to be produced. Um, and an example of that is the staff person that was hired to take care of our magic carpet. And this past year, in my opinion, we had the most wonderful, wonderful carpet in a long, long time. So I see that and I see having a conservation officer, um, with, with emphasis on taking care of the wildlife enforcement, um, uh, i- in the same, in the same, uh, way. But again, I think a wildlife protection ordinance is, is now ready to be produced. Um, I would be happy, very happy to help, um, staff, uh, draft it, whatever I can do. But I think it's absolutely, um, important that it become, uh, uh, all encompassing ordinance and not to have it split up. Um, and our deer, um, they do need protection by all means. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
There are no further hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment and open up, uh, council discussion. Council member Emilio.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, I, I don't know if Amanda is still on the line here, but, um, that was just an outstanding presentation. Uh, I thought I knew a lot about the coastline, but, uh, I became a little bit more educated, uh, through that, uh, presentation. It was excellent. Um.
Thank you.
Wanted to let you know about that.
Council member Pudori.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I thank you, Ms. Priest, for presentation. I would also like to echo the same comments. Uh, I would say your presentations are typically the most colorful presentations. So, so thank you. And I can see the passion, uh, in your voice even at, uh, nine PM. So, so thank you for all that you're doing. Uh. I, I would, I, I, I'm in support of the subcommittee in general. I just had a question. Uh, there were some comments from staff, from BNRC. In looking through all the comments, there were references to coastal plans. There's plenty of information to digest really, uh, even with the recommendations. Uh, what, what, what is, what do you think? I mean, from a subcommittee perspective, will, will a subcommittee? Uh, I'm thinking January twenty twenty-two is kind of like a short timeline for the, for any subcommittee to actually go through all of this and come up with a recommendation. Is that a, in your opinion, is that a short timeline or, or do you think it's okay? Or, or, uh, maybe it's.
It's, well, it's, it's a, uh, a date that I threw out, but, uh, certainly the subcommittee could, uh, make it longer.
Right. My, my view is there seems to be, uh, I mean, certainly like the, uh, a lot of information is, uh, embedded in those comments where I think a lot of, uh, is in some sense, some research needs to be done before forming an opinion on what, what are our next steps. And I see some comments from the public as well, which, uh, I think we need to incorporate, uh, for, for the subcommittee's ideas. So my view is that we should give it at least, uh, till March, uh, for, for, that's my, my opinion. Uh, but, but I'm keen to hear other suggestions too. But thank you.
Council member Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was a wonderful presentation. I, I enjoyed it thoroughly. And I agree with, uh, council member Pudori. I think there are a lot of, uh, there are a lot of things to work through. I think a subcommittee would be the first place to start, uh, working that through. I would hope that a commission would get formed. You know, the, the, the point that, uh, uh, Ms. Priest made about us being surrounded by marine protected areas just really highlights, it almost compels us to form a, uh, specific commission that will deal with the protection, uh, of this habitat. And we have to be sensitive that this is, this is where people, uh, where other species live. And, uh, and I think a commission would be, uh, would be warranted to, to address that sensitivity in those protections. And I also agree with, uh, former Mayor Carmelita Garcia's idea about contemplating, uh, a unique section within our municipal code that, uh, does, um, codify all the, uh, protections that we want to see both along the coast and inland. I, um, I think it's a good idea to go to March, I, uh, maybe even March thirty-first, uh, um, to, to be able to go through this completely. But I would like to see as an end result uh, of this subcommittee, a commission, uh, recommendation. And if you are ready, Mayor, I am prepared to make a motion.
Um, why don't you go ahead? I see council member, um, McAdams has her hand raised. Well, we don't, uh, we didn't ask for volunteers for this, for the, uh, subcommittee, so perhaps it's a little premature.
I'm willing to volunteer. But I'll make the motion and then we can have further discussion if that's agreeable.
Okay, please.
I'm, uh, move that the council forms a subcommittee to consider recommendations from the Coastal Wildlife Protection Advisory Committee and Beautification and Natural Resources Commission returning to council with its recommendations no later than March thirty-first. Assuming there's thirty-one days.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to second that motion. Um, and uh, thank you. And I have, uh, just some comments. So for me, I, I'm, um, really happy to see this and excited. And I know, um, Ms. Priest, you know, spoke about how it was busy before COVID. And, well, we got hammered during COVID. Um, and even now, we still are seeing, um, a lot of mask litter, a lot of glove litter. Um, we're still having some to-go trash. Um, we're seeing an increase in water rescues. Uh, people who are, you know, kayaking may be are not as experienced, uh, and they're getting stuck. We, you know, we have seen an increase in those. And really, for me, uh, this can be, the subcommittee can, can come back whenever they want to come back. I want to make sure that we have money allocated when we're talking about our budget. Um, and I don't want to come back March thirty-first, but we're already doing budgets and we miss that opportunity. So, um, I think that, um, we, we need to make this investment. Uh, because I don't want a lack of staff time, uh, to be the crutch. And, you know, to have a dedicated person is going to have experience, um, like what you spoke of to get grants. You know, that's another crutch that we hear. Oh, we don't have anyone who can write grants. Well, typically, you know, people who are, um, in, you know, environment, you, you have to be able to get grants because, or you don't have money to sustain your programming. So I think that that is, uh, really important that, um, this council, um, allocates that money um, for this investment. And so that way, um, you know, we used to have an environmental programs manager. I know this would be a little bit different. Uh, because this is also like an education and boots on the ground, um, component. But we are going to need an expert, um, someone who hopefully is as passionate as you are, uh, to guide us through this process. And, um, I don't want it, that, you know, a little bit trickles with the staff person and the staff person is responsible for this little area. Like, I don't want to cut this. Uh, this needs to be, um, a dedi- a dedicated staff person. So, um, for me, what is important is that we, um, keep this, uh, position in mind when we're doing budgets and, um, we set aside, uh, that money and create this position. So, thank you.
Council member Emilio.
Yes, um, I would like to, uh, I know, uh, councilman Coletti he motioned, but I would also join this committee, but I'll second, I don't know if you have a second on this.
Yes, council member.
Okay, so I would like to take a stab at the subcommittee.
All right, that, I think that would be a, a motion to amend on the original, uh, motion to add to yourself, uh, council member Emilio.
Yes.
It's fine.
And, uh, so I hear a second.
Yes.
And council member Madam says, okay, so we've got one motion on the, on the floor. Um, a- any other comments on this, uh, agenda item? Seeing none? Ms. Kendell, maybe we have a vote, please.
I apologize. Does this include council member Coletti on that subcommittee as well?
Yes, council member Coletti and Emilio.
And Emilio, great. Thank you. Council member Coletti.
Aye.
Council member Emilio.
Aye.
Council members Tomlinson.
Aye.
Pudori.
Aye.
McAdams.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. We're now on to item twelve D, uh, city council code of conduct for council boards, commissions and committees. Council member Tomlinson.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I'll be brief. I just have brought this item forward for council to have a discussion and consider, um, adopting this new council policy that will establish a code of conduct, uh, for council as well as our boards and commissions. Um, I sort of working on this with Ms. Heidi Quinn back in the beginning of this year. Um, around the time, you know, we've been updating our mission, our values, our vision statement. Uh, the handbook, um, the boards and commissions handbook, and so many of those things have come a long way and I think are in a great place. Um, and it made sense to me. Um, you know, I, I know redundancy is something that we don't want, but you know, having the boards and commissions handbook, uh, is an excellent document. It's very process oriented and a very procedurally oriented and heavy. Um, so in conjunction with the ethics training that council members and. Um, so in conjunction with the ethics training that council members and boards and commissions do. On an annual basis. Um, I, I think having a code of conduct, it's, it's a standard. That's going to link our professional conduct to our missions and our mission, our values, and our principles. Um, I've done a, a little research before I, you know, asked, you know, how often is it that not only do cities have code of conducts, it's very common. Um, the, uh, League of California Cities has a shell that you can use. Um, because many cities adopt these codes of conduct and, um, use them as a place. To set their standards for professional conduct and all of their interactions. I'll also note, I know we're not a Fortune Global two-hundred company, but over eighty-six percent of global Fortune two-hundred companies. Uh, utilize code of conducts. And they're very common practice, um, so. I think the, the code of conduct written here, I'm very open to, to comments. Um, and, and even some edits or corrections, but overall, I'm, I hope that the council will consider. Uh, adopting the policy so that we can create these guidelines and norms. That will be a, a great pledge of how we personally will conduct ourselves. Um, and, and all those who go after us. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Uh, yes, Jill Kleese, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you very much for this. Um, this is why I stayed up tonight. Cause this topic was ever so important and the bonus was that I got to hear the environmental report, which was fascinating. Um, it seems like a superfluous motion or agenda item, however, it is very, very critical. As you all know, I work as a substitute school teacher. And if I heard some of the language that I have heard and the defamatory comments that I have heard. About two people that I know, that if they were on the playground and I heard this language that was said. I would say that it was bullying behavior and it was not acceptable, and I'd probably send them to the principal's office. And that is what I have heard from, um. People that I hold in a higher position, that is you, my esteemed representatives, and it's unfortunate that I have. I hold you in high regard, um, everybody makes mistakes. However, it's very important that we have a code such as this one to live by. Because if we have something as important as diversity and inclusion, it needs to include all of us. And representing ourselves, and this includes the citizenry. When I hear something that doesn't sound polite. In a comment by public speaking, I cringe. But it should not be happening on a public basis by you who serve amongst us and just as a general rule, so I thank. Um, Councilmember Tomlinson for bringing this up. I think it's very, very important. I don't think it should be watered down. I think it should be held in place. And I'm sorry that my friends were bullied on the playground and I hope it doesn't happen again. And we all make mistakes. Let's just not make this one again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Well, I'm going to kind of disagree with the, with Jill Kleese. Unfortunately, nothing in this proposed code of conduct instills public confidence and trust in the fair operation and integrity of city government. Sounds more like a nanny state edict. Trying to control the behavior's message and how it's delivered through punitive measures. It's all about consequences, not truth and trust. The mayor quite rightly presides over city council meetings and maintains civility and behaviors. I think that is already achieved. Each council member already knows how to behave. There are already city ordinances for discipline, not by trying to add some. Very subjective measurement and authority procedures. Free speech, free speech expression should not be stifled nor the message artificially controlled. All of you take your ethics training. Same with boards and commissions. Yes, the public expects dignity, respect, and fairness. But we do not need this code of conduct. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm very glad that Councilmember Tomlinson has brought back the code of conduct issue, which I supported. Excuse me, on June sixteenth and continue to support. Um, and I, I agree with, with Inga that civility on the council, um. Itself during meetings is, is just fine and, and, and handled very well by the. By the mayor as well. It, but it's particularly clear how much such a document is needed after hearing the comments of a resident of PG. At the October sixth council meeting regarding disrespectful language directed by a council member. At members of the public in emails and a Facebook post. When a productive and respectful member of the council. Um. Who has many council accomplishments to be proud of can slip into disrespectful comments to members of the public. It seems clear that having appropriate guidelines in a code of conduct would help any council member be more aware of their communications. Um, I'm not sure the entire document is quite ready, or I, I, I don't. I don't see all the punitive, um, consequences. Um, that Inga does, but she's awfully perceptive, so. I, I think maybe parts of, of the document may not, may not be necessary. It may be advisable for a committee of council members to work on it together. But in any case, a code of conduct is, is just a very important basic document that, that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor. Um, sorry, one just popped up. Uh, Carmelita Garcia? You have the floor?
Welcome.
I have mixed feelings, uh, about this policy. It's, um. I don't know, it, it's as though. You're trying to, uh. Herd together kindergarteners or, or something, um. What I don't see in it, though, is. What are your protections as elected officials and as council members while in, in session? From members of the public who tried to take advantage of public comment, um. And what have you, and, and begin to speak not, uh, in very pleasant terms. Um. So I think that kind of needs to be addressed in the policy as well, so that, you know, all of you have, uh, some sort of protection. Um. Yeah, I don't know, I, I, um. I, I, I really have mixed feelings a- about this policy, um. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say. You guys need to be protected as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Emilio.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um. I'm in support of this. We've been discussing it for several months. And, um. I think, uh, of course, we all receive the ethics training. I think that's important. I'm, I'm not discounting that, but I've received many. Ethics training. I think this is a, uh, this makes common sense, uh. It's a, um. It's for, for ourselves and the future councils too, and, uh. To me, it, it, it creates a, a process of conduct with the council. Citizens, the community. I think that's important. It just, uh. I'm in, uh, support of this, uh, policy. That's all I want to say.
Councilmember Peduri?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm also in support of the policy. At the end of the day, we need to have a civil and a respectful governing cul- culture. Um, which is consistent with our best practices that we, that we do. Uh, and I think we need to hold ourselves to higher standards, uh. I, I do think, uh, uh, the comment from Ms. Garcia is also valid. Uh, we need to probably consider adding in something in here which, uh. Which allows us to, um, to, I mean. I mean, the things that she made are, are spot on too, so that, that, if we can add that too, I, I would be open to that. But in general, I'm in support of the policy. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for bringing this forward. Um, I do support the policy and it will complement, uh, the handbook, uh, the BCC handbook as well as the. Um, employee handbook. There's, um, a couple of additions that I would like to see, um, when it's talking about, um. Uh, conduct during. During the meeting, um, so I don't really see anything about being on time. Um, and being prepared. And for me, you know, that is really essential. Uh, to our, our, our meetings and, and the boards, uh, committees and commissions, um. And also, you know, not being absent, so I, I would like to see something. About that expectation. Um, I do think that that is important. Um, and, you know, I mean, of course. Everybody is, is late and busy or absent, but I think when you get people who are. You know, constantly late or not showing up. Um, they're, you know, that is part of, of conduct. Um, and also being prepared, I think is just a real basic, um, ask from our colleagues and. People who are serving. Um, so on page four, the last item that starts with refrain from administrative function. It's missing J, so it's going alphabetically, right? So there's, so the last one is I, it doesn't have a J. Unless this is part of I. So that just needs to be, uh, fixed. And then on the resolution date, it says June second, twenty-twenty-one, so that just will need to be updated. Um, but besides those edits. And if the council agrees to the, um, additions talking about. Um, you know, not being late and. And absent, um. And coming prepared, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Bruce Smith?
Thank you. Um, I'm supportive of it as written. Uh. I think that we should maybe think about, uh. How we can protect ourselves. I agree with that. That was a great comment, uh, by former Mayor Garcia. Um, but I'm not sure we want to do that on the fly. I think we might want to. Pass the policy tonight and then create an amendment, um. For, for that rea- just to, so we can think it through. Not exactly sure how our code of conduct could possibly reach the public. It could be written, but. There's no sanction that can be. Given to the public on that, but we, we can certainly put it in there somewhere at some point, but. I think it's important that we get this down tonight and. Maybe perhaps bring amendments forward in the future.
Councilmember Coletti?
And then, Well, when this first came to us, I, I did support it, at least the first half. But, uh, the first few sections, but. The other sections I had problems with, so I voted to table it. And I would still feel the same way, especially as regards to sections four and five. And, uh. I'll tell you why. It's, it, you know, we just went through, uh, in closed session as part of the city manager's performance review. We went through and enumerated, uh, which came from the charter and the municipal code, his responsibilities and duties. I think we need to do that for council as well. And a lot of what I see in this policy document. Essentially ignores or isn't fully informed about what council's duties and responsibilities are. Um, and I'll give you a couple of examples. For instance, you know, in four G, it talks about channeling communication through appropriate city staff, questions for city staff should. You know, that could mean anything, should be directed only to the city manager, city attorney, civic clerk, or department heads. That is in direct conflict with city article twenty-one. City council has the right of inquiry. That is part of our oversight function. We can, and, and to the extent that this, uh, policy conflicts, of course, it will be subordinate to the charter. Um, the charter does give us the right of inquiry. It gives us the right of inquiry to any staff member, including consultants. Um, so that's something that we need to fully recognize. We need to understand what our duties and responsibilities are as council members. And really, I mean, the graphic, as far as I'm concerned, comes right from the org chart. You know, we report to the, uh, we report to the voters. They elect us to be their representatives. And the city manager reports to us. Um, we give him the responsibility for managing, uh, the city, but it is our responsibility. In o- in oversight to, uh, oversee what he is, uh, doing, and that comes to four J. First, uh, this is, uh, an amendment. This was added. You can tell, uh, this was added, uh, from the last time, so this is. New, a new item. It says refrain from administrative function involvements. Including but not limited to city staff on the making of appointments, consultant selections. Processing of development applications or granting of city licenses and permits. Well, I'll refer back to article twenty-one. We're not allowed to any way influence the city manager and how he makes appointments or hires his staff. However, we are certainly, as part of our oversight responsibility. Uh, we can certainly engage with the city manager. On the processing of development applications or the granting of city licenses and permits. That's part of our oversight. Responsibility, and to the extent that this policy conflicts with our inherent right to do that, this policy is subordinate. So I, I have a lot of problems with this document in that it does create. A sense of establishing what our duties and responsibilities are. Instead of flowing from what our duties and responsibilities really are through the charter and through our inherent. Um, oversight powers. So I'm, um. I would ask that G, uh, four G and four J be removed. Um, in fact, I would ask that sections four and five, uh. Be removed, or excuse me, sections, uh, four be removed entirely. Um. I think what we're trying to do here, I think what we're trying to do here is encapsulate. Within a, uh, and this is way too many items in this policy. I mean, it's just, it's, it's way too many. What we're trying to encapsulate is the golden rule, right? Do unto others as you do unto, uh, uh, as you do, uh, unto yourself, so, um. Or do unto others as you would have them do unto you. The, the point is, though. If it is just encapsulating the golden rule. Then, yes, the public primarily needs to be, uh, protected, and I think this is what this is coming from. Is that we should not be criticizing the public. We should not be making derogatory comments to the public, absolutely not. And to the extent that this policy would, um. Would point that out, I, I am in complete agreement. But when we're starting to talk about how we interact with the city manager and staff. It's impacting on what our responsibilities are already, are, uh, are, so. I don't want to see this policy document stepping in on our rights and responsibilities as prescribed by the charter. So to the extent that they do. Uh, they have to be ignored, and that's, you know, that's going to create more confusion too. Um. So I'm. And then there's also the, the whole thing with the enforcement. Uh. You know, we're kind of creating a little bit of a witch hunt. And anytime the city manager or staff gets upset with city council oversight. They, you know, maybe they're going to come and say, oh, policy infraction. Well, you know. I hope that doesn't happen. I sure don't. So to that extent, I want, I'd like to see, uh, sections one and two. Which I think do encapsulate the whole idea of the golden rule, right? Treat people with respect. But don't, don't give up your responsibility of oversight either. The city managers and that will employ. We are his supervisors. That never go, that can't be, you know, just brushed aside with this policy document. So I, I hope people would consider that. Those are my general comments at this point. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Laredo on sections five, enforcement and censure. Are we on good legal grounds? Can council censor members of council?
Council does have the authority to censure members of council. The key question is, what are the consequences of censure? But I do believe that as stated, this policy would be enforceable. If I could comment on one other aspect that was stated earlier about extending the, the code of conduct to members of the public, I don't believe that that can be done through the policy. A policy adopted by resolution certainly can be used to control internal affairs of the city. But when you're going to affect the conduct of and consequences of the public, the only means to do that would be by ordinance. And I do have to caution that we would need to make sure that we don't run afoul of the, of the Brown Act and the rights of the public to speak. But, but if you want to feel it's appropriate to try to regulate that, you cannot do, you cannot use the policy as a means to affect the rights of the public. This is limited to the council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, I'm in alignment with Councilmember Colletti. I like, I can support one and two. I think when we get to three and four and five, we start getting specific about the council taking action against other council members and on, well, at this point, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this without knowing a lot more of the specifics of what happens. I'll give you an example. Let's see. There's thirty seven new rules. That's a lot of rules to, to digest. And bear with me, it is getting late. Okay, five A enforcement. The mayor shall have the primary responsibility for enforcing council meeting decorum. Okay, I'm good with that. That's what we already have, right? I think that's, and Councilmember Tomlinson, you spoke to redundancy. And, okay, so I think if this is giving me more responsibility than what I already have as chair of the meeting, then I'm, I'm uncomfortable. But if it's just, hey, the mayor's the chair of the meeting, that's okay. Council members calling for a point of order. That's already, that's part of Robert's Rules of Order, and I believe that's in our municipal code. So that's already there. So I guess I'm good with that. And the point of order, Robert's Rules identifies which points of order have precedent, can be interrupted or not. And so I've been going by Robert's Rules and asking the city attorney for verification. This, this last sentence on five A, a point of order is to be given precedence over any other motion or discussion. I think that has potential for conflict with Robert's Rules of Order. So I'm not sure. What is, and I guess I'll ask Councilmember Tomlinson on five, five B, what, what is your suggested procedure for this? How would this, how would this occur? Censuring, if you wanted to censure a council member, what, what does five B mean? How, how would you go about that?
Mayor, I, I don't know. I would probably ask Ms. Laredo, Mr. Laredo for help, but, you know, my intention would not to be to get to five B. I, I see this code of conduct as a great way to write down kind of the expectations among the city council and staff and, and that we can gently remind our peers if they're straying from the commitment to this code. And that should be it for enforcement. I, I, I guess, Mr. Laredo, if it had to be stepped up to another level, thankfully, that type of action, I haven't seen the need for that yet with this council. So I haven't gotten that kind of advice from the city attorney yet.
If I may respond to the mayor? I, I see the censure provision of item five B to require a public hearing to be set on a future agenda with notice to the entire council that this was going to be a public hearing as to whether or not the individual should be censured. So that would be subject to a, a separate vote. So if there was an incident in a public, in a meeting, that, that it would be up for, to the mayor to determine that there should be a censorship hearing. And then the actual hearing would occur at, at a later meeting.
I get, Mayor Peak, I'll, I'll say that when I was speaking with Ms. Quinn about it, we felt it was needed to include sort of the, I'll call it like the doomsday scenario, not intending to head down that path. But at this point, I'll, I'll, I'll put the question back to you. If there is complete, you know, behavior that is outside of, of normal golden rule behavior, bullying and extreme, extreme behavior by a council member, you know, what do we have to point to? What, what is, what are the ways to deal with that? Thankfully, we don't have that going on. But I, you know, there's all kinds of scenarios that can play out in life. I've, I've read about some pretty terrible councils in, in other cities and, and what they've had to deal with. And so I think it's important to have the, the option there to take action if it's where to be needed.
And, and, and I guess my tack is, is a hundred and eighty degrees. I'm, I'm concerned that this is, to give the analogy, I can't think of a better one. This is a loaded weapon. And we don't need it now. But you're saying, yes, there might be a situation where we might need it. But I'm, I'm worried about the misuse of this. And yes, maybe we can all agree, the seven of us are never going to have to use this. But I'm concerned that we're, we're setting this on the table for other councils who there might be members that would abuse, abuse this. So so it makes me, you know, unless I saw that there was a, a clear and present danger of a council member, of one of our colleagues now being extremely disruptive, I'm, I'm disinclined to support enforcement. I, I understand that the, one of the four city examples was Salinas that you, you brought, you researched for this. Thank you for that. And Salinas used this in exactly the manner that, that was, that's just described. It, it was because a council member apparently was habitually absent and perhaps abusive. And they brought this, put this resolution like this just for that one person. We don't have that person today, and I hope we never have them. And I'm, I'm worried about, like I said, misuse. I'm, I'm concerned about the conflict with any current policy or code. I don't think this should be used to infringe upon council's powers and duties or, or create confusion. Let me go to number three. The mayor or chair, or chair shall allow an equal opportunity for all members to speak without allowing the conversations to be dominated by one or more members. So I'm, I'm at a loss as to that. The Roberts Rules. Everybody gets to speak. And we don't have a time limit or a limit on the number of opportunities that a council member speaks on a particular item. Are you suggesting that we do that? We limit council member discussion?
If I can just interject, because I think you're asking me. I, I would ask that you don't look at this as a report card to how we're working. This was to encompass, I, I think that when I, when I, when I put this together, we're kicking butt at a lot of these things. And this code of conduct would be one that we'd be proud to pledge that we already do it, and we're going to continue to do it. So I did, you know, these sentences aren't all a personal reading into it to, are we doing this wrong? Is that why this is in here? Absolutely not. This is to try to codify and put down, you know, the best practices for, you know, standards of professional conduct that I think we're already following really well. But as new council members come on board and as a, a very large staff were to read this, this policy and, and have this code of conduct to adhere to, so they know how to conduct themselves going forward, is a helpful document. That's, that's, to, to me, there's not a whole lot more to read into it. I, I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Yeah, I, well, thanks for that clarification. Yeah, I'm, I, I think there is, obviously, I am reading other things into this and, and maybe there needs to be more words to this. You know, the, the item B, acknowledge members who have not had the opportunity to speak on an item. Council members don't need to speak on an item if they recognize that all the points of view have already been discussed. I mean, so I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where, what does that mean?
Do, I remember having a conversation with you before where this hasn't, we, we do adhere to these things, but I know in the past that hasn't always been the case. So if there's a new mayor, when you are no longer mayor, having this guidance for them to, to follow, you know, maybe they won't have known to follow your example necessarily. You know, it's a good thing to have it written down. It hasn't always been the case that this has been followed. It is the case now.
Well, I, I guess I haven't been to a council meeting where mayor has not allowed council members to speak. I, I would think the council would, I would hope say something. I, item C, acknowledge and allow city staff the opportunity to speak if they have informed the mayor of their desire to speak. That one is in conflict with another policy on our agenda. When, when we start talking about meeting protocol, we already have a policy on that, that particular item. We have every agenda item, as we all well know, the first part, that has three parts, right, of every agenda item. First, we have the staff report. Staff and however many staff or consultants can speak to, to that particular agenda item and, and what their recommendation is as well. And then the second part is public comment, just for the public to speak on that. Staff and council are quiet. And then the third and last part is the council discussion. Council has the right of inquiry to call on staff for questions, what have you, and that's been our standard procedure. And I, I see, that's our, that's our policy today. I, I I'm, I see no reason to deviate from that policy. This statement seems to say something different. Well, I've already spoken long enough. So that's a few other things, but let's go on. Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think we're, in all due respect, I think we're just trying to deal with each word, it seems like. And I think this code of conduct, I, I think this, all this is probably for the future. I'm not saying it's happening here, but I'm just thinking it's happening. It could, it could happen five years from now, four years ago. We have a, a policy. I, I hope it doesn't, you know? But, you know, reading this, it says on the, let's see, second paragraph, the last sentence says, is, it is expected that all elected and appointed members will adhere to the code of conduct and that violations of the code of conduct may result in some consequences. It doesn't say shall, it should, it could be may. So my, my thoughts on it is if suddenly somebody doesn't follow the code of conduct, it isn't, the shall get consequences, may. And that could be a verbal. But I, I'm, I'm still in support of this this policy.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm ready to make a motion. And, but I do want to add the, to be on time and be prepared somewhere where it makes sense. Edits that Ms. McAdams brought up for the I to be a J and the date to be corrected. So my motion is a recommended action with the the two edits and to add a sentence about timeliness and being prepared.
A discussion?
Yes, yes, discussion on the item.
So a council member?
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you. And so what Councilmember Emilio just said about, you know, disciplinary action, who would be doing that if that happened? And how, and he had said something where, you know, we're, we're using these different words of may and shall. Well, I think it has to be consistent. It can't be may, you know, you may be disciplined, but then maybe this council member does the same thing and is not. So I would appreciate like some clarification on that. And who makes this determination?
I think, Councilmember Adams, where is your question directed?
I'm not really sure.
The mayor is, is who I would give the answer. Not question to the mayor, the answer is the mayor.
Okay, so the mayor will determine. Okay, so the mayor will determine. If, or what? If there were to be a consequence?
Oh, what happens if someone objects to the mayor?
Mr. Mayor, uh, as I read uh, section five. The consequences upon censure are to be selected at the public hearing by council. It would not be by the mayor. The mayor would be referring this to the council for censure. But the public hearing and the determination of the consequences would be by council.
So, so thank you, Mr. City Attorney, but can't we censure each other though technically now if we were, wanted to? I mean, any elected body can censure.
That, that is correct. The question is, uh. If there is a common understanding as to what behaviors warranted censure and what conduct could. What consequences could result from that?
Okay, so then currently in this policy, if, if I did. One of the thirty-seven rules and didn't follow one. Could I be censured?
Council has the authority to censure. The question is. Was there fair notice to you of the consequences and would it be properly enforceable? And if there was a question as to the standard, then that would be raised at the time there was that censure, censure speaking.
Okay, so where is that process in this policy? Or do we have another? Do you see what I'm, I'm trying to like connect all the dots of like, I don't want any ambig- ambiguity, you know what I mean, like?
Your, your question asked whether or not you had the authority to censure without such this policy. This policy does call for that in section five. It says, uh. That sanctions would be as appropriate by council. That the hearing has to be held by council, notice of the hearing has, has to be provided to the entire council.
This would be for actions during a meeting.
The act, actions during the meeting will be by the presiding officer under Roberts rules. But if there is censure, uh, a, a, a question as to whether or not an individual should be censured. That would be subject to a separate hearing at a, with separate notice.
And so how would this work for the planning commission, let's say? Who would, uh, would the mayor? Discipline the commissioner or?
This policy only talks about consequences for the city council. This policy does not address. The censorship consequences for other boards and commissions.
All right, shall we move on? I've got a number of hands up. Council member Coletti.
Thank you, your, thank you, your honor. Well, you know, a couple of interesting points have been made. I'll go back to your question about three A. Uh, allow an equal opportunity for all members to speak without allowing the conversation to be dominated by one or more members. And, um, that's very subjective. And I, I, I'm kind of with you, uh, Mayor, that this. Code of conduct, at least in some of these sections, three, three through five. Are based on a subjective feeling or analysis and it's weaponizing. Uh, maybe a council member's displeasure with another council member. And, uh, and that's not, that's not how this is supposed to work uh, on, on council. So. You know, Joe, Mr. Uh, Council Member Emilio said, well, it's a may instead of a shall. Well, you know what? I'd feel a lot more comfortable if it was a shall. Because then it's, then it's not, uh, it's not subject to subjective standards. And that's the, that's where the, and I think that's where the mayor was explore, exploring, where he was probing. He was saying, look, you're giving me this subjective uh, rule. There's a universe of possibilities on how to interpret this. And then it's just like, well, this council isn't doing that, so it's good enough to get adopted. That's, that's not a, that doesn't cover it for me. I want a policy that uniquely identifies what we're trying to complicate, uh, com- accomplish. It isn't subjective and it's, it's basically more attuned. To, hey, this is the golden rule, this is how we're going to treat the public, but, um. I don't want to see us weaponizing, uh. Weaponizing uh, a policy, uh, document. Uh, and I think that's what we're doing. Let me, I've got a question for the city attorney. We're, I'm still very confused on how the censure process works. My understanding is any member of council can put an item on the agenda. Is that correct, city attorney?
That is correct.
Can any uh, council member put on the agenda an item of censure?
I do not believe so.
What limits them?
Uh, council members can put matters on the agenda, but you cannot dictate how. It will be placed on the agenda, since this would be required notice to all members of the council and a very specific type of hearing. I think we'd have to comply with the, uh, the policy and the policy says the mayor has primary responsibility for enforcing.
No, he says it's, you didn't finish the sentence. Says for enforcing council meeting decorum. Doesn't mention anything about a censure process.
But.
That is not.
Council members can call for a point of order, but the, but B does talk specifically about the censure process. And that has to be a majority vote of the full council.
Yes, but that's what, after it's already on, been agendized and on the council. How does it get on the agenda is what I'm trying to get an answer for. And the council can place. Any item on the agenda, that's title two, then why can't they place a, uh, an agenda item dealing with censure?
I have to go back to A, that the, uh, mayor has primary responsibility for enforcing council meeting decorum.
That is not, okay, that's, I accept that as your answer, but that does not outline. How the mayor is given the responsibility for agendizing a censure item. Um, so again, more ambiguity, more subjective analysis, not acceptable. Uh, I, I can, I can really support this, but it doesn't seem like we've got much, uh. You know, much momentum in getting rid of. Um, sections three and four, and I'm going to reiterate again, section four. In the title of the section, by the way, is city council conduct with city manager and staff. That is already fully articulated within our charter, charter article twenty-one. So why burden ourselves with subjective policy? When we already have it clearly established in law, our charter. Uh, and then weaponize a misunderstanding of that subjective analysis through the censure process that. Quite frankly, no disrespect to the city attorney, has not given us a really good idea of how it would proceed. So, uh, lots of holes here. I could, if we got rid of sections three, four and five, I am more than happy to support. Thank you, your honor.
Mayor Protempore Smith.
Thank you, your honor. Um, you know, I, I started out on the kind of let's go with what's, what's been written, but there. The enforcement piece of it is not clear. And, um, that's become apparent through this hearing. I also can't support on the fly amendments of, they're on subjective topics such as preparation for a meeting. No, really, none of us really know. Who's prepared for the meeting, how are we prepared for the meeting? Uh. I mean, I can go on for a while about that, so I don't, I don't really think that's fair either, so. I'm not going to support it because it's just, we're kind of just doing this on the fly and it's just. But the enforcement part of it, I feel can be weaponized as well. And I think we just gotta. You know, to rely on each other to do the best we can. I, I don't, I just don't, I see a lot of problems with that and a lot of subjective analysis. Thanks.
Council member Kaduri.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the subject of the censuring and the process, uh. I view it as more of how we conduct our special meetings. How do we call the special meetings to order? We get a. Four-person vote and we basically have a special meeting and in place. I mean, it's the same concept, uh, of. How we can agendize an item such as this. Um, and I, I was just Googling in general censure, the process itself and this. Censor is like as a process and a policy statement. Is available, and the first thing that popped up was actually the United States Senate. So they have a policy in there for censuring as well and applies senators too. Uh, so to me, again, I, I think what council member Tomlinson provided, this is really, um. I mean, hoping for the worst case, I mean, we're already following the rules. I mean, so this is just a code of conduct policy that. We need to place, uh, so that we abide by those rules, not only for us, but for future councils as well. And frankly, for organizations, uh, it's very common to have, uh. An employee, uh, like a misuse kind of policy, an employee policy and employee code of conduct in general. Uh, so this, this to me appears to be almost like something that we need to have to begin with. Thank you.
Council member Tomlinson.
So, um, I'm happy with it as written, but I also started out with my agenda report saying that. You know, there may be edits. There's quite a few. So a lot of deletions without necessarily, um. Recommendations for what to put in their place. Uh, some ideas, and so, you know, maybe what Ms. Gianni said was to, you know, form a committee to try to improve the policy. Because it does seem like. There's some, you know, my, my thirty thousand foot view idea of having this code of conduct is to help us. Not to hurt us. So if, uh, if there is a, an agree, I mean, the last time it was just tabled, like nobody wanted to talk about it. So it seems like this time, maybe you do want a code of conduct, but not exactly this. You know, all the lines in here. So, um. I'm open to working with one or two of you to improve it and make changes. Because I do believe having a code of conduct is something that strong organizations have. And I think we're a strong organization and we should have a code of conduct.
I'll, I'll jump in. Um, again, I'm in support of, of number one and number two. And after that, I think it becomes more problematic. I, I'll give you an example, another example. Okay, um, so what I've heard from council is that. Currently, there's no issues. No one has, this was not written with the intent. To come to the next meeting with a hearing and censuring anybody. In fact. I'm, I'm hearing that council members are comfortable with, uh, where we're at right now. So I guess I would turn it to, uh, section number four is city council conduct with the city manager and staff. So I'll ask the city manager, what do you feel about this? Are there any? Do you have any issues with the current council with the rules listed under section number four?
Sorry, Mayor, if I understand your question, you're trying to ask me if I have a, a, an issue with section four?
Do you, what I've heard from council members are that. This, this policy would not be applied today because we're doing okay. But I'm asking you specifically on section number four. Of these items, A through J. Are there any items today that, that you would bring up? Uh, with other council members or back to council?
Point of order, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that we're, the discussion item is on our code of conduct, not on a review of. Council.
All right, but I'm, I'm asking this number, section four is conduct with the city manager. And so I'm asking, and I'm asking if the current council. Is currently adhering to all the policies, all the A through J that's in your proposed policy. How is that not germane?
Uh, I'll leave it to the city manager to answer the question. I know I answered the question from my perspective. But I didn't intend for everybody to sit up here and have to profess whether or not they have, uh, are happy with every one of these items. That was not my intention to be doing a review of our, um, of our conduct. So it's, it's a talking about how we should be conducting ourselves and agreeing on that. But, oh, that, thank you for clarifying.
So, Mr. Harvey.
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, um, yeah, there have been instances, uh. With this council where I have had concerns with some of the items outlined in section four, yes, to answer your question.
Hmm, oh, which ones?
Well, um. Uh, you know, there, there are times, Mr. Mayor, when I, I feel that, um. The council manager format is not followed. I, I very often, um, feel that. Um, I, I'm playing catch up with certain inquiries.
I'm sorry, could you give me the letters on?
So, so I'm speaking, I'm, I'm right now, okay, so section four deals with city council conduct with city manager and staff. For A, respect and adhere to the city's form of government, which is a charter city operating under a council manager form of government. With the city council acting as a legislative body of the city. So I'm speaking directly to the council manager. Form of government that for A references with this comment. And if you're, if you're, I'm just trying to be candid and I'm trying to be truthful and I'm trying to be honest. And yes, I, I do at times feel like I am gone around or not. Uh, consulted or addressed on the, uh, you know, in your, in the role as the administrative. Head of government as your appointed employee. I, I, that does happen quite a bit. If you're asking for other, you know, sections in particular in section four. Yeah, I mean, I, section four G. Yes, city council has the power of inquiry. But, you know, to efficiently operate as your chief administrative officer, it would be nice if. Inquiry started with me. I do my best to try to respond to the council members as my most important people. Um, and if I could funnel those to the appropriate person when I'm not able to respond. I, I don't. I, I don't see that happening all the time. I very often, you know, I, I hear back from my staff. About a council inquiry, which is okay sometimes, but sometimes I'm caught flat-footed and sometimes I'm not aware and sometimes. You know, that, that's problematic. Section, I mean, the, whatever the, the, the number is, four, the last one and four. Um, I, I do see. The council's a policy board. The legislative body. You're, you, you define the, the, the what and, and, and me and the staff figure out the how. And I do think that there are times when this council is in the weeds. And there are things that are being discussed that probably aren't. Really appropriate for this council to be discussing because you're a policy board. You should be at the thirty thousand foot level. Leaving me to figure out how high to cut the grass. So, you know, I, I, if I'm, if I'm to be truthful and I want to be truthful and if I'm to be forthright and I want to be. I, I need to tell you that. That is, that is how I feel. Um, if you're asking my opinion. So, and I do appreciate, by the way, Mr. Mayor, you asking me that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your candid response. So how, um. How would you use this policy? In those, the instances you described?
Mr. Mayor, I am very mindful of my role. I am very. Mr. Mayor, I am very mindful of my role. I am very mindful that I am an employee, that I'm an administrative person. I'm not setting the, the policy and I work for a policy board. And I really want to try to treat the policy board in an egalitarian manner. And you know, I would, I think that if, if, if you're asking my opinion as how I would, okay, I, I, I'm an optimist and I try to humor me, because I'm, I'm, I think this explains where I'm coming from. I, I don't want to be punitive. I don't think punitive is a good thing to be, but I think guardrails are important. And I think that, you know, you, Mr. Mayor, as the presiding officer, if I saw something that was of concern, I would want to respectfully bring it to your attention. I just wouldn't want to say, Mr. Mayor, I had such and such episode happen or such and such was brought to my attention. You know, it appears that it might be in conflict with the code of conduct. I just, I bring this to you for your consideration. I, I wouldn't see it as something where I was emailing all the council members or I was, you know, asking the city attorney for a legal opinion. I just would, you know, I'd bring it to the presiding officer, which is you, of course, and I'd say, Mr. Mayor, you know, I just, I bring this to you for your consideration. And you could say, you know what? I don't agree. Okay, fine, you know, all right. I, 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 I don't have any desire to engage in a tattle-tale thing or a hunt, but I, I, you know, it, it would be, I think, a good thing for everybody if we had guardrails and if there was this mechanism that I could communicate things to you if they happened. You know, uh, that, that would be how I would do it. I would just say this, uh, this is what I've observed. I could be wrong for your consideration.
Well, I, I think that that's entirely um, appropriate and um, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I don't want any, I would not want this policy and, and I please correct me if I'm wrong, that this policy uh, somehow makes me a traffic cop. And Mr. Harvey, you used the word presiding officer, which made me a little nervous. I'm the chair of the meeting. Right? And um, uh, but I really have, I, I don't have any authority over council members. I, I don't have any more authority over this council than any other council member. So um, um, anyhow, just want, and so I would hope that this policy doesn't leave anybody. It does make me, it does make me nervous that it sort of gives people the idea that the mayor is um, gonna be. Well, my, it says the mayor right after enforcement. Just makes me nervous. Anyhow. I, I think there's some, we've raised a number of issues here and I, I hope they'll be looked into. Councilmember Coletti.
Well, I was gonna uh, reiterate that point. You chair the meeting when it's in session. When you're out of session, you know, that's, there's no authority you have over council that, you know, you would be the go-to guy on any uh, anyway, uh, I, I would like to make a counter motion, your honor, if you're, if you're amenable.
Please.
I, I, I make the motion that council adopts uh, a, a resolution to create a council policy to establish a code of conduct for council boards and commissions that contains section one and two only of the proposed council policy found in our packet. And if we, you know, and then, okay, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
And, and follow up, your honor, this can be amended at any time, any place. This gets us, I think, to where councilmember Tomlinson wanted to start, which was, hey, this is how we should be behaving with the public. And if we want to amend later, we can, but I think we start with one and two, which kind of encapsulates the golden rule. Uh, so that's my justification. Thank you, your honor.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Uh, councilmember Coletti, uh, I, I've heard extensively from you and everyone else about four and five. What, what was wrong with three?
Thank you, councilmember Tomlinson. It was the additions of three, A, B and C. If you would like me to amend the motion to include three but remove three, A, B and C, I'm willing to do that. Under the mayor or chair shall.
Items in purple, remove. I, I would um, I would, I mean, in order to get something, I would be happy that if you can include the parts of three you just suggested, I of course would be happy with that. And, and remove A, B and C, although I will say that A, B and C are something that I would like us to adhere to a little bit better.
I understand. And we can, I think we should, we should discuss this further. I just don't think we're gonna get further tonight. So, uh, mayor, with, if I can amend my motion, please?
Please.
I amend the motion to uh, adopt a resolution to create a city council policy to establish a code of conduct for council boards and commissions that shall contain sections one, two and three as provided in the council policy attached to our agenda, but it shall admit under the title, the mayor or chair shall three, A, three, B, three, C.
And I'll second the amendment.
Councilmember Kaduri.
Thank you, mayor. I think if you're omitting all the section, the other sections, I think we're not really getting to what the purpose of why we are creating this policy. If we're agreeing to one and two, I mean, taking your same example, mayor, uh, what if uh, an official does not serve as a model of leadership and civility to the community? What are our respective actions? I mean, that's not really provided anywhere because we're omitting three, four and five. So all that one and two is doing is just statements, but really nothing else is happening there. So we need to have something in here which is in the form of five B. And, and I'm, I'm not really open to uh, just going with one and two at this point. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Gandell, may we have a vote, please, on the amended motion first? That's the motion by councilmembers Coletti and seconded by McAdams. Well, that vote, and if that's unsuccessful, we'll have the uh, vote on the motion by councilmembers Tomlinson and Emilio.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmembers Kaduri? Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protemp Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
No.
Motion carries, five to two.
Thank you very much.